Did you guys have a chance to review the agenda?
I had a chance to review the agenda, we moved to accept the agenda.
A second.
Kate's been moved and seconded to accept the agenda, is there any further discussion?
I do have a resolution that the Circuit Court's asked for. It is just the appointment of Magistrate Palin. Now that we have a new Circuit Court Judge, their Supreme Court asked that we redo it. So I have it if you want to consider it. And then an agreement with Candy Wright for grant writing, which I sent you all, but it's not on the...
You guys have a chance to review it? Wasn't it on the agenda that you sent it out to us?
I don't think so.
I thought it was.
So, but I do have the, an agreement with Candy Wright and a resolution if you choose to consider them.
Okay, is there any further discussion on the agenda? Hearing none, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Does everybody have a chance to review the minutes from the July fifteenth meeting?
I did, I moved to approve the minutes from the July fifteenth regular meeting.
A second, Pat.
Kate's been moved and seconded to approve the minutes from the July fifteenth regular meeting, is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Does everyone have a chance to review the vouchers?
Yeah, I've been pulling through.
I would move to approve vouchers, is this presented?
Not a second, Pat.
Kate's been moved and seconded to approve vouchers, it's presented, is there any further discussion?
There's something I've not seen in four months.
That's gonna be a fair one.
A fair one, okay. There you go.
Which ones are you?
Antelope and Premier payment, yeah.
Well, it's related to fare.
Very good.
Any further discussion on the vouchers? Hearing none, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. He carries.
No.
Okay, we have a Hospital Foundation Board interview scheduled for this morning. Uh, Georgianne Brown, good morning.
Good morning.
Why don't you introduce yourself, tell us a little bit about yourself and why you're interested in being on the Hospital Foundation Board?
Uh, Georgianne Brown, I am, work for State Bank, the president there, I have worked there for seventeen years, prior to that I was at Wells Fargo for nine. Um, I'm also on the YO Improvement Service District, which should be done for me in about a year, so. Lauren Nordin approached me as for the Hospital Foundation Board, and that is just another way that I can get back. Um, I also coached here at the middle school, high school for twenty-ish years, and haven't done that for a while. So, it's just, I think it's one of those things, anything that I can do to help the community, and when somebody approaches me, I think, oh. That's a little bit of, of me.
What do you know about the Hospital Foundation Board?
Um, I don't know a whole lot about it, um, the bank is involved every once in a while trying to help with their fundraiser, fundraiser, excuse me. And that's the extent of what I know. I feel like I can probably help as far as, I think Lauren said they have a, um, person that's gonna, not gonna be there for the driver. So, I think I can provide, you know, some expertise in that and help with that.
Yeah, we have two positions open on that board, one's for a one-year term, and one's for a two-year term, I think they're both to fill on expired terms. From people that left, is there one or the other that you're more interested in?
Whatever works for everyone else, works for me.
So you don't have a preference, Georgianne?
I don't, no, no.
The other person interested is from Flat Valley Bank, does that change it?
Most definitely, no. I saw that a little farther down, no, it doesn't matter to me.
There may be some conflict. Do you guys have any questions for Georgianne? We're pretty familiar with Georgianne, she's a YO investment, or certain support for a long time.
I know you all.
Yes.
We see her quite often.
And I am, I'm very happy that you decided to keep going into public service, you know, volunteering portion of your career. That's very helpful, Georgianne, especially someone with your skill set, so thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, it's good when good people step up, you know, to do these positions, 'cause sometimes it might be a little thankless.
Yeah, absolutely, and it's very hard to find people, I mean, we've found that in YO, it's very hard to find replacements, so.
Yes.
If I can help the able and willing, I'm here to do it.
It's appreciated by more than just us, everybody out there should really step up and take note, you know, when people do this.
Absolutely.
Normally for incoming board members, we'd ask that, um, you take the, it's an online board, and of course, responsibilities, it's put out by UW Extension or, I think there's two of them, one for the library, but.
Okay.
Georgianne, you've been on the board long enough, you probably...
I might have taken that just for YO, just for...
Yeah.
That as well.
Sure. You've gotten the extra, she's done the public officer training, not just the board member training.
So you have, you might be overqualified.
Well, you're overqualified.
Does that, no, just kidding.
You are, you are more qualified than I am.
Will, will, uh, do you have any questions for us?
I don't think so.
We'll be making an appointment a little later on, we have another interview to do, and like I said, we have two positions open, so. But we'll make that point after we do the other interview, but thanks for coming in this morning, it's good to see you.
Thank you.
Kate, here's your... Okay, we'll move on to the YO Improvement Service District road maintenance agreements.
So this is a hundred percent my fault why it's taken so long, uh, and kudos to Jason for probably being the most patient person, um, on the planet, waiting for me to get it done, but. I know Chris has still been doing routine maintenance and helping out, so thankfully a handshake still goes a long way in Platte County. So, two agreements, the first one is a continuation of what we've done in the past, essentially the only difference, and I talked with Georgianne a little bit. The only difference is, in the past, we've always paid for any improvements on main drive maintenance, aside from the initial improvement. But if there's a chip seal requested by YO, and I don't even know if that's on the horizon, but if one's requested and you agree to it, YO would pay for the chips and the oil. The county would be responsible for distribution and labor, my thought is, the material, the chips and oil will outlive the agreement, and who knows what happens, but. My thought was, I think that's a fair agreement, that if something major like that, that YO would be responsible for the chips and the oil. Aside from that, we'd still be responsible for routine maintenance, and I think it changed a little bit now that there's some heavier traffic on YO or on Main that there was when the first agreement went into place. And so I think that's why it's maybe a little bit more.
Has that been chipped before, sealed? Didn't we do a, just a crack seal maybe?
We did, YO, YO paid for the whole clean out and crack seal last time, you guys did a small asphalt, dumped some asphalt in the middle of the road, knocked it off of the blade, ran over the tires. In one little dip by a man, probably four years ago. Otherwise, I, there hasn't been any maintenance that I'm aware of, you guys have fixed the road where it abutted to YO Ranch Road where it's cracking out, that's been repaired several times with your...
Dura patcher.
Dura patcher, otherwise you guys haven't had any cost of repair at this point, other than snow plowing, but you gotta get your own machine cleaned up too.
Yeah. Chris, do you have any comments on the agreement?
I, I think it's, I think it's fine, um, especially Main Drive, there's not, there's not much concern there, the road's holding up pretty well as it is, so I think it's, uh, yeah, there's, if there's a little problem, we can dura patch it, and it's, they're, they're quick fixes that are not...
On Main Drive, when it was put in, was put in, the whole road system was put in at two tenths over paint top, it's upgraded. Main Drive was put in at four tenths, and when it was originally put in, there was county funding for the second two-tenths, need of the year heavy equipment at the time, so. That road is substantially better built than the rest of the roads in the subdivision as far as depth and stuff, and by looking at the way a lot of the other roads are constructed in the county, I would say it was built to normal standards at the time that it was built.
And it's fair, fairly well.
I'm sorry?
And it's fair, fairly well.
Yes.
Yeah.
I mean, normal cracking.
Yeah.
It, it could use broomed out and the cracks probably sealed again, it's been six years now since then we had crack sealing or something like that. I, I think that prior to there being some issues in the neighborhood, I was spraying all the weeds through all the cracks, which really helped stop cracks and mitigate water and stuff, but. In, in my case, I was told that it was a conflict interest and I was doing it for free, so, and I was buying the chemicals myself, so I just quit doing it because, you know, if I'm gonna get accused of doing stuff I shouldn't be doing, I'm not gonna do anything at all.
Conflict of what interest?
I was the president of the YO Improvement Service District, and they thought that I was taking money for it.
Oh, I see, okay.
No good deed goes unpunished.
Absolutely.
The only other thing on this agreement, it's a five-year, so June thirtieth, twenty thirty, and that's why. I, I don't know, do you guys can predict any other potential major maintenance other than a chip seal that may occur, but?
I, I don't even believe that it's gonna need to be chip sealed in that time, I think a crack seal, and if you have a dura patch machine and, and can put the oil into the crack that way, and we can pay for that, that would be more than sufficient, and there's not even very many big cracks in Main, there's just a couple that could be touched up, probably in an hour or something.
Are there any utilities out in the streets?
The sewers in the street, and I'm unsure of the others, I believe the phone's off to the edge, I believe the water is behind the lots, so I think it's only sewer.
Where these cracks are though, you don't have any pavement shifting or anything to that level, it's just basically a crack that...
Yeah.
Could propagate into something worse.
Correct.
Can you do crack sealing with your dura patcher?
I don't know how that oil would do, honestly, just spraying it with a crack, but there's, there's other stuff you can lay out a bit. Use weed burner, melt it right in, it comes and just almost like pulls the tape, and you can lay that over a crack and then burn it into, there's something we could look at, you know, we typically, we don't really do much crack sealing.
Okay.
At Roden Bridge, just 'cause. Get back with, unfortunately, but.
Well, that might be something that she can look at, revisit too, with the, a, a sealing company, a sealing and striping company for a, I mean, in our engineers, or in their engineers' report, it was a ongoing look at the re-crack sealing, more than, you know, I think when we had the engineer report done, they said in the ten-year deal, we might have to look at chip sealing, but it wasn't even a, a yes, and I don't see where the, we're losing chips, I mean, we still have good aggregate roads. I think more than anything, the maintenance of the, getting it swept, getting them blowed out, getting some crack sealing there would, would prolong the life another five to ten years.
Or some like roping tar, like some sort of tar, I mean, that's...
Right.
What I go to, like, maybe you just have a guy with a five gallon bucket, walk him by somebody with a broom and a compressor, just...
And I'm just thinking that maybe since we don't do crack sealing, that may be something that would be, something you guys would do on your own?
Well, and like I said, we did it last time too, so I mean, that's something they can look at.
Yeah, it comes down to if we can do it, or if we can't do, you know what I mean?
I wish we were at that point of being able to just go back to crack sealing, or they do.
I think, I think, my personal opinion is crack sealing mitigates way more road damage there than waiting until it becomes a pothole and fixing it, you know? Stopping the, stopping the water from getting below the impervious layer and causing the expansion during the winter when it freezes, exploding the road, I, I, I think that's where your dol, your dollars are best spent compared to waiting to fix a pothole, so.
Yeah, PM is always way cheaper than repair.
If it's a big enough crack, we can dura patch that with oil and chips and get, and get the aggregate down inside, but, so, if it's a bigger crack, that's, either, but I haven't seen really any.
There's nothing big, it's all little, I mean, but. I don't, I think it's been remedied, you know?
Kate, um, I've been seeing a motion on the Main Drive agreement.
I would move to approve the agreement with YO Improvement Service District, Main Drive.
All right, say it, yeah. Kate's been moved and seconded to approve a maintenance agreement of YO Service District for Main Drive, is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
And the other one is for, um, I know you guys have talked about it a little bit here and there, but I don't know if it came to a solid conclusion, but this is for Antelope and Coyote Drive, and I think, um, YO ISD can speak to it, the trouble of getting a contractor to come. And so, this would just be for Antelope and Coyote, what it provides is we would grade Coyote twice per year, and then routine maintenance along Antelope Drive, and, that, though, all those costs would be reimbursed based on a schedule established by Chris. This is, I think, just an annual agreement, that way if the rates change year to year, YO can agree to them, and so can you, so that's why this is, in my mind, this was an annual agreement, because those rates were subject to change, but, um, anyway, that, that one in a nutshell. And you can see the responsibilities here of YO and, and the county.
This is what we were talking about the last time I came before you guys, about, I think we were all trying to get legal paperwork and dollars and costs and things looked at by the attorneys, and most of that's all been taken care of at this point.
I think it goes back to, I don't wanna be accused of being whatever you were accused of past spring cracks, you know what I mean?
Yeah.
So.
Chris, do you have any concerns with this agreement?
I, I, I don't know, sir, Coyote Drive's pretty, uh, pretty short, and it's, it's real close proximity, so it's, it's not a...
Hit it when you're going in and out of the county shop, training your new guys on it.
It's, yeah, it's not, I'm sorry.
Training your new guys on it.
That's, uh, yeah, honestly, it'd be a...
Hell of a deal for you guys.
It would not be a bad training, training little road. And with the proximity, it's, yeah, start to finish, I think it would take a blade to leave the shop, go do a down and back after the initial, 'cause it is a little washed, so the initial one would be a little heavy to get it kind of to snuff, and then after that, I think a blade would be, leave the shop, be back within an hour. And then as far as Antelope Drive goes, that road's actually still in good condition, um, it's got some cracks, but then, again, we talked crack part, but as far as blowouts, potholes, things of that nature, with the proximity and having a dura patcher out there to touch up a couple spots, it's. Twenty-minute detour, start to finish, and, and as long as, you know, it's at a time of convenience when we have oil and we're doing dura patching, it's easy enough.
I think it's a good deal.
So, just as a thing to note, the big problems that were with Coyote, we did get a contractor in last year, and brought in a bunch of road base and built up the top end where the big mud hole was on the corner, and had them do a complete regrade and, and bring it all back up, well, it's been since then now that we're here, and it's been a year or so, yeah, it does need touched up, there are some washes in the road, it is gonna take a little bit longer this time, but. Finding contractors that are available has been extremely difficult, and getting quotes that, it just blows my mind what they, what they wanna charge you to come over and do a, a, a two-hour project, and they're charging you like it's a week-long job. So, doing something like this where it's a convenience deal and it's being reimbursed at the, at the distance it spends works for both, to, to offset his cost and to, to, I don't wanna say lower ours, but make it economically viable.
Actually get it done.
Yeah, yeah.
No objections? I would move to approve a service agreement between YO Estates and Platte County.
Maintenance and Antelope and Coyote?
Pretty yes, for maintenance of Antelope and Coyote, sorry, I was looking for those words, but I couldn't find it.
Kate's been moved and seconded to approve an agreement for the maintenance of Antelope and Coyote Drives for the YO Ranch Improvement District. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
And we'll get, I've gotta wait to get that agreement to you until we get a final list of charges, that's Chris, but I have the Main Drive agreement for you. So I'll get you the, I'll get you the other agreement once we get a list.
Okay.
Thank you guys.
Thanks for your...
Okay, we'll move on to Roden Bridge.
All right, good morning, for the Roden Bridge, last thirty days, we've done a ton of dura patching, um...
Nope, that's a year ago.
Ah, hold on. We're dura patching last year too. So we, in a nutshell, we've got most of the, uh, most of the major arteries in the Wieland area, Glendale Park had a few, had a few rough ones, we spent a couple days up there, just for, uh, I guess, scope or what have you, each road takes us almost two days, really, to get it, so we basically walk the road in its entirety and try to hit as much as we can of it, so. It's been, it has been a lot, and our feet are a little tired, so, which is good, so we'll switch on to chip seal here pretty quick, but we did some sign replacement, and speaking of signs, would love to reiterate again that at the Roden Bridge, there is an abundance of old signs, that if somebody would like them, they're welcome to come get a, you know, shot-up stop sign, stop sign that's sun faded, it adds character, and it's probably cooler than stealing our brand-new signs that we've got on the road. So, I did talk to the, uh, I talked to the Sheriff's Office about it a little bit, but there's been a lot of road signs that people have been going after lately, Rainbow Road, I don't know why, um, Drake in front, just got, and, and they're just pulling it out of the ground and leaving them, like, it's not blowing out, they're getting pulled out of the ground and left on the side, it's called Rainbow Road, they even left their tools there, so the Sheriff's Office went and collected tools, I don't know if they can run prints on them or not, but. And I just got a call this morning about Ayers and Rock Lake, I think it is, so, I, I'm not sure what it is about pulling road signs, but I did talk to the sheriffs, they're gonna, it's hard, I, you know.
So they're just pulling them out of the ground and leaving them?
Some of them, and some of the, I think Drake, Drake is missing, but Front was still there on that road sign, so, on Rainbow, that we've, there was a, a rash, people taking that one for a while, so.
But they took it, not just pulled it up and let it lay, they actually...
Yep, they were taking it, so that pole's got, uh, it's got a bit on it, all the bolts are, and we had to stop and actually weld all the bolts on, so I think when they pulled it, they had the sign laid down, and then all their tools were right next to it, 'cause it was just like, whoa, this isn't gonna work, we need to get out of here, and they forgot all their stuff, so, it's actually, it's a little challenging.
It's pretty clever.
Yeah, so we've tried to, we've tried to put in some steps to stop people from doing it, but we go and do every sign, it's, what do I call it, it's just, uh, added stuff, try to weld bolts on, lock it all down, so we're, we're trying, but, you know, each one of those signs with the, uh, the base, the post, and the road sign, it's two-hundred-and-thirty dollars plus, you know, that's just material, that's not even the time it takes for a compact to go out there and stuff like that, so it's kinda, and, and it's just one more thing, you know, having the most time to get to, to those, so. I'll ask my kid to keep an eye on TikTok.
I know. I stopped like four people either driving like jackasses on one of the roads. Oh, just making it whatever. Felt like a 60-year-old man. Like, you sons of bitches, this is dangerous.
Yeah, darn kids.
I know. It's like, oh boy.
You're cooking on us old guys.
They were making a TikTok, yeah. And like four gray hairs popped out of my head. I grew a little mustache, I was like, ah, damn.
Yeah, exactly. I see burnout marks all over on some of these roads. It's like, you're going to get hurt doing a burnout right next to an irrigation ditch, but, yeah, so. But yeah, and I did have one person came to the Road and Bridge and asked if we had an old street sign for Palmer Canyon and it was one that was, you know, the wind had broken and there's no value to it. So it's like, yeah, absolutely, here you go. Rather, yeah, you know, so we have all sorts of signs out there. Caution signs, stop signs, street signs, and they're, uh, they're welcome to come ask and I'll happily give them an old, old road sign if they leave our good.
Yes, it's not unique.
Right.
It's like, you can just come grab one.
Yeah, come get one with a little character to it. So, but we're trying to keep up with the sign replacement. We took out a tree on Pruitt that was, it was, it was close to falling in the road. So fortunately, we were able to get to that before that caused some problems. We had some washouts on Patton Creek and Meadow Gillup and Glendale. They've been getting a lot of, uh, a lot of rain. So the Glendale blade hand, he's just been, he's really just been going from one, one washout to the next and trying to keep up. We had a blade up there, her another blade, a loader up there for a couple of days, just trying to help get some of that stuff back up to what it was. And then Pleasant Valley actually got washed out again Friday, I think it was, and Kenny was on that.
Wasn't as bad as last time.
Not near as bad as last time, but they definitely had some, they definitely had some water.
But you've mitigated that by digging out all them culverts ahead of time when I was on the phone with them folks. And they said, well, why are they digging out the culverts? Well, for the next one that comes.
Yes.
The rain's got to be able to go through there, so that's their first order of business before they fix a road. It just, that's still order how things have to go.
Yeah, so that's what, uh, yeah, so, and it, and it helped. It didn't wash out near as bad, but yeah, and then I was surprised even some of them over here washed out pretty good from a covert being plucked. So we're, we're working on, we're trying to keep up. The rain is nice, but it just seems like when it comes, it just keeps going and it comes down heavy. So we're trying to just keep up with those, but that's, Glendale's had a lot of trouble, but he's up there fighting it, but he's, uh, he's got a walk and roll now and loves that piece of equipment and he said it is really, really helping him a ton. Service three blades to all trucks. We picked up a new mechanic truck that cost six grand and then we put, we had an $18,000 budget. We bought the truck for 6,200 to be exact, but we bought it for 6,200. Beal went through that with a fine tooth comb. It had one bad bearing in the back, so he's replaced that, which was $80 on eBay. And then got a lift gate for, I think that was 3,400 and we have a good mechanic truck now. It had a new motor put in not too long ago by Bob Ruarts. So it has 200,000 miles on it, but the motor has a lot less and doesn't think else. So I think we got a, I think we got a good deal there. I feel good about it. We started mowing. Whenever we get a chance, just trying to get out and if we got a spare minute and a spare guy, we send them out to mow her and we'll get our other mower back from the fair grounds now that fair's done. So hopefully we'll be able to start getting a lot more mowing done in the, I'll send one down to Chug Water right after chip seal and then we'll get Gersey and Glendale taken care of. Hopefully most of them done by then. Then a lot of chip seal, chip seal prep, which will haul, like I said earlier, we'll haul gravel, or excuse me, chips. We'll start hauling chips tomorrow and Thursday. Hopefully that'll get us real close with all the chips.
Do you have a stockpile location already out there?
Yes, sir. Wade Lauk, right off of Jefferson, had a, has a corner full of cheap grass, so he was pretty agreeable. And, and we, uh, we cleared it out, we got it set and then we'll go in and reseed it. So that's kind of, that was kind of the trade off, which is fair. So, and he just, he requested we don't reseed it with cheap grass. I said, no problem. So yep, he's been real agreeable in that and it's, it's a really nice location because it's right at about the halfway point. So that should allow us to keep going pretty good. But yep, we'll start hauling tomorrow and start stockpiling. When that covert on Spiel Creek wash out again, the tube held and, but the, the volume of water that came down that was just incredible. So, and we didn't, we, uh, we're going to start looking, we met with Ian out there, myself, Mark and Ian, we kind of talked at a couple courses of solutions to try and firm up, firm all that up. So I'll start working on getting concrete as soon as chip seal's done. That's our next, next big focus is try and get that thing in there and done. Then, so that was south of 34, then north of 34 on Spiel Creek. There's another covert that's getting a little rough. We've, we've been watching that one for a while. It goes under the irrigation ditch. It'll absolutely need to, uh, it needs to get replaced. It's just hitting its life cycle and that covert is too short for what the road is. So I have, uh, I've talked to Nathan Graves in the past about that one and I talked to another guy from the Irrigation Ditch, or District, excuse me, yesterday. What we may look at doing is seeing if we can't try and do a little cost share with them. So we'll put in the tube. They can provide the, they have a pretty big excavator, which when we did the Spiel Creek tube, we had to rent one, so that would be helpful. And they said they have a really good operator and then once we get it put in, there's some erosion on the bank where the water comes in, obviously on the inlet side hits the bank, starts eroding and then goes down the tube. So we'll, we'll talk to them about potentially putting some head walls and move walls in there to firm that up. If they'll, if they'll do that piece and provide an excavator, then we'll see if we can get work to the rest of it. So I think there's a lot of, uh, good potential there to help cost share some of that. So it won't be all on us, which would be nice, but we're keeping an eye on that one. We're going to try and go out. I don't know, I don't know when we'll be able to get to it. There's just, it's stacking up quick on us, but we will, uh, we'll try and shore up that bank, at least put in some, like a retaining wall on the side there, on the outlet side to try and shore that up and then work some drainage so that it doesn't keep washing out the road going down by that covert. But that one is on our radar. We got some cones out there right now for it. We sold the corners SUV. It actually got picked up yesterday. That was about $1,500. I guess I... And then we did some cattle bar plan out on Antelope Creek and Windmill. And yeah, it was, it was, it's been a busy month. It's been a busy month. So, and then for the next 30 days, uh, chip seal, obviously that's our big one. So we'll go out, like I said, we'll be hauling tomorrow, then next week we'll, if people are driving down Grange, please watch out for us. We'll be walking down the middle of that road, putting our tabs out and everything else and there'd be a lot more equipment, equipment coming. Then once we get chip seal done, we'll work on that South Spiel Creek covert, getting that, um, concreted in. And then we have just, there's some more dura patching we need to do on front. I didn't put front on this, but front needs it pretty bad. Front, Fish Creek needs a lot of it. We'll be up there. That'll probably take us a week, I think, at least. It's going to be several, several days just trying to clean up Fish Creek. Gray Rocks has a few little spots between, um, basically the highway and the first boat ramp turnoff. So there's a few spots where the corners get a little thin and a couple of potholes. But those will be, those are our big focuses as far as dura patching that we try and get done. But Fish Creek, 100% needs it. There's a spot on Gear Creek we'll, uh, we'll touch up as well. And then like I said, we'll get the mowers down into the Chug Water area. Sign boards should be shipping out this week. I was hoping we'd have them in time for chip seal, but I don't think we will, but we'll have the, the sign boards are coming in pretty, pretty soon and we found a, we found a real good deal on those, so hopefully they'll, they'll be good. So, um, just a couple of discussion points, I guess, is, uh, so the Black Hills Energy up in Glendale, Morrell is not here now, but she was here. She's, she's gotten very involved in that and has offered up a lot of help, so we're very appreciative. So she's reached out to their legal team and their people that do all the permitting and things and she's starting to work on, work on all of that with them because they are, they want to haul up bridge and just oversized lobes in length, but still it's, it's a, it's a lot of moving pieces and then we're supposed to have that road use improvement in place. So she's up, she's all over the middle, so.
So their subcontractor is up to speed as far as they got to have this agreement between Black Hills and County.
So I talked to him and he understood and he even said like he wasn't surprised that any of this has happened. He's worked with him in the past and ran into similar obstacles. So they asked if they could, uh, build a stockpile up on Horseshoe Creek and I CC'd Morrell on the response to him was, once there's a road use agreement, then we can start looking at additional requirements or things that they would want out about that.
Look, we know what they'll do without it. We absolutely do and it's not going to happen that way. Do we know which roads they're wanting to use?
Um...
Is it just Horseshoe or?
Ridge and Horseshoe were the, were the main two. They were, they were going to use a State Road and Elkhorn Creek was the other one.
So as they move south, will more roads in this area be affected?
I'm not sure. I have to, uh, I have to look into what they're, some of the stuff that they're doing down in the Chug Water area too and get that kind of sorted.
If they provided you any kind of a site map that would give you, you know, what, would be some information ahead of time if they're going to run this line here, what roads, I mean, would they, would, would it be affected by that, you know, from where they're going to put this, the poles?
Up there, they have not. I, I would have to look through my emails again. I have all my emails saved from them. I'd have to look through it to see, because we had talked about Chug Water with them, but that was almost a year ago, so.
And they easily could have changed, you know, where this line may run or may not run and that kind of thing. I guess it, it would help you in advance.
Yeah.
If you had that information from them.
Yes, sir. Yeah, I'll, I can re-reach out to them too and see, and then I'll keep touching base with Morrell and see where she's at.
Once you know the roads, then you can go out there and do a, basically all the roads and get documentation of the condition that they're in right now.
Absolutely. Yes, sir.
Not knowing which roads, it's hard to do.
Exactly, yeah. But they are, uh, they have been, they have been hanging out there on a ridge for a while in that first quarter mile ridge. Did, it took a little beating. We had to haul a little bit of gravel up there. Not a lot, but...
Don't they have a yard right there off?
Yes, sir.
At Glendale, right off the interstate?
Yep.
And then I think there's another one down south across the county line.
Oh, heading towards Cheyenne, yeah.
Bear Creek or something.
Yeah. Yeah, and I'm not sure if that's what's going to be their Chug Water stuff or not, but we'll, we'll keep on them and keep inquiring, so.
They should be sure they're facing the line and, that one at their tree. It's a ways from the line.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Ain't 25, that's a way. Yeah, whatever.
Yeah, I think they are a little, I think they are a little further south of the county line. And it's, yeah. So I just kind of also just wanted to kind of, as we're getting into chip seal and thinking about, um, oil roads and things like that, just kind of want to plant a seed, maybe start a little bit of a, uh, discussion on potentially next year for chip seal and maybe, excuse me, looking at not chip sealing and potentially looking at, uh, trying to lay asphalt. So, uh, front, front has taken a heavy, heavy beating over the years and Rompoon, we're trying to keep up with Rompoon, so both of those together about three miles and we've been really trying hard to keep up with Rompoon, but it is, uh, it's heavily used by trucks as a detour route, which I wouldn't be opposed to putting a weight restriction on that road because it is definitely...
On Rompoon?
Yes, sir. It's definitely, uh, waddling out that road pretty hard and running it. So, but I talked to, kind of like what the, um, city's dealing with Hales, Alexander Construction, but talking to them, they can go in and they can do a leveling course, um, they can mill down a road and it's around 100,000 a mile. So if we did three miles next year, um, it would be about what we paid to do our six miles of chip seal, but those roads would be good and it, and it'd be a little bit more, but then if we came back and then we did a, uh, if we did a double chip over top of that, that, that road's good for...
For a while.
Yeah, I, I might go to my grave and that road still should be in pretty decent shape. So...
I think that's a good idea. I think that, you know, chip sealing does quite a bit. I think we are, we do have some roads they could probably use if they're not, where to waste money doing chip seal on.
Yes, sir.
I think that's a really smart idea.
And then, and the hardest part of, I wouldn't say the hardest part, the thing I don't like about chip seal is it doesn't level. So, and that's where we try to, we try to fix a lot of that with the dura patcher, so that's where you'll see some really exaggerated dura patches that we're doing. It's trying to fix even some of those low spots and, and get it so that when we do chip, it'll level a little bit, but not as much. So it's, it's something that I would, I would like to explore more if we're, if we're open to that. I would not be opposed to looking at that. And if we, uh, and they can mill it and we could actually widen that road just a little bit too and have some shoulders to help prevent some break off. I think there's a lot of advantages.
I think, yes, you're on the right track.
And I think a lot of those roads that you're chip sealing are just inverted chip seals to start with.
Yes, sir.
Really paved roads.
And chip sealing is great, but that oil is, uh, has polymer in it, so it does get a little flexible at times. So like on Fairview, you can see where it kind of flexes when you're coming up over the tracks, right where everybody, right where everybody starts taking gears to get back up to speed. So I think it'd be good. I would, I would certainly like to look at it a little bit more and then give you, give you all a little bit more information on it and see if that's, uh, something we would really like to explore. But I talked to, uh, Laramie County and for the price that they're paying and they have all their own equipment, even if we use their made up machine, we're still looking at...
Yeah. The thing about, you know, what you're talking about, when you refer to profiling, you know, the road mill and the profile and so forth and so on, um, because if you just throw a wearing course or a lift or whatever on top of something that's garbage underneath, you got garbage on top.
Yes, sir.
Um, the deal with that goes back to compaction.
Mm-hmm.
And what's under it.
Absolutely.
You know, so, you know, if you're not able to address that, then, you know, that would be in my thought processes going forward of you've got a good substrate and then you can start building off of it.
Yes, sir.
And, and is that something that Hale, you know, Sheep's Foot, is that something that they would do in that process or?
So they, they would basically, like they could provide milling, so they would go in and then it would be on us. I mean, they could do it all, but it would be more cost effective for us to come in with our rollers, packers, graders, use our equipment to, to put that, to make that foundation and make that base good.
Yeah, I'm just thinking about, you know, if you're going to make a 25-year road, why don't you make a 50-year road?
Agreed.
Just by going a step to ensure that...
Yes, sir. Absolutely, absolutely. And our goal would be to be, uh, beat 600 street. That'd be our goal. Bless their hearts, but yeah.
Bless their hearts.
So far you have a pretty good track rate.
We would, uh, knock on whatever I can. We would try to keep that rolling that way, so.
For you here, you don't have to worry about it, Chris.
Yeah, true enough. Yeah. But, um, the other thing I kind of just wanted to discuss a little bit is, so, um, our oil truck is a little, it's tough. It's seasoned. I don't like using the term old. It's very, very seasoned. Yes, it is very experienced. Um, like when we go fill it up in Cheyenne, we actually trailer it. So it, it drives around the yard and it, you know, it'd drive a little ways for what we need, but, um, potentially looking at, um, something we could consider is getting a new, new oil distributor truck. didn't, you know, it'd drive a little ways for what we need, but potentially looking at something we could consider is getting a new, new oil distributor truck. At that point, we would be able to spray our own oil during chip seal. We could actually look at doing some fog sealing on some of these asphalt roads, which would help close up some of those cracks and seal up some of the pores a little bit in there. Right now, last year we paid around nine thousand dollars to have somebody come and distribute the oil for us. This year they're charging an additional $2,000 deadhead fee to bring the truck down to the site because they're out in Montana. So nine thousand last year, around 11,000 this year is what it's gonna roughly be. We looked at rolling that into a payment for a new truck. I looked at some just really, really quick. I saw some around the 50, 60 mark, but within a couple of years, we, we bought a vehicle for, we're paying essentially rent and it would give us an additional tool to go out and we could look at fog sealing some of these roads and try to preserve them a little bit longer. So I think it would be cost effective in the long run. So just, again, not something we'd have to decide immediately, but I just kinda wanted to make you gentlemen aware of that, you know, this is an associated cost that we're doing and I think we could potentially look at shifting that in a different way. So it would, it would make chip sealing, right now it's all hands on deck and we borrow a guy from the Fairgrounds to run the mower, but I think we can, we can figure it out and make it work to have a person operating the vehicle.
Can you get a distributor, like trailer and not?
They, they have those as well.
So, so do any maintaining another engine?
That's, that's fair. I don't know. I'm sure there is. I haven't researched trailers that well, but I can certainly look into those.
And I don't know how handy it would be, you know, maneuvering it when you go to use it.
Right.
Because it needs a trailer, but.
Yeah.
I've seen those, you know?
Yeah, those are pretty, yeah.
If it, if it has a spray bar and the application capability, then that's fantastic and that's, you know, that's not all bad. I can certainly look into those also. But, and that's a, like a, I can certainly lose trailers too.
Yeah, you have to maintain another.
Yeah. And plus the axles and everything are open.
Drive train the whole night.
Everything is open and.
And it could make the, it could lower the top because there's not quite good.
Yeah.
Couldn't spell distributor for a minute. Sorry.
As long as you can read it.
Yeah, that's fair enough. That's fair enough. We'll just flip that page and nobody can repeat.
For something that you're gonna use a few days out of the summer or something or maybe weeks that it's parked the rest of the time. That's kinda hard, you know, hard on you to just sit.
Right. Yes, sir. No, that's, that's definitely worth exploring. But, and I, and I do think if we, if we had someone, we could distribute our own and then do some fog sealing, I think that would really help. It's definitely why some of our roads as well. So those are just, since we're in chip seal and oil road kinda much, that I just kinda wanted to bring up some of those discussion points to just kinda food for thought for us all. Having any questions? That's all I have, gentlemen.
Do you have some temporary guys for a moment?
Uh, no. No. Um.
No, Dale's full time now.
Yeah, Dale's.
Dale's full time. No. Yeah.
I met him out on Palmer Canyon coming in this morning.
Oh, nice.
I think it was Dale.
Uh, oh, and the mower, that was Brian.
Was it Brian?
Yes, sir. Yep. So he, and he's, he's been good. He got his CDL now. So he's, he's in full swing. Last year, last year, we just had a lot of the, especially with the BNSO drive, we had a lot of blade hands actually just mow their areas. It, historically what they've said is sometimes the, the temps are a little tougher on equipment and then trying to teach them every year.
Those blade hands know their areas and they know where, where the rocks are.
Yes, sir. Absolutely. So, so that's a, like, that's what we do after chip seals. We'll take the mower down to Chugwater and you'll see, you'll see Nick just cruise around in a mower versus blade.
You know, it's dry slash mowing. I've seen this happen and I had it happen to me once. Start a fire. No intention to it. Boom. Here you got. So these mower tractors, they pack an extinguisher.
Say if they all have fire extinguishers.
I'm just saying. I started one with a disc cutting wind rotor one time and the field wasn't by dry.
No. Run around with a spray backpack on your deal. Or you can turn around and swather and just run it over. If you're, if you're riding somebody else's swather, that's a big one. That's right.
They all have a fire extinguishers and to that we're, I'm gonna pick up a couple leaf blowers so that they can, one, keep it, keep them clean, but then seeing videos where guys hit, hit on a grass fire with a leaf blower and just blow it right back onto itself and it helps mitigate. So they'll, they'll have some, some equipment.
Well, I was just curious because we know how dry it is.
Brighter.
You know, and it can happen.
Yes, sir.
Doing the right thing.
It will happen. It will happen. I mean, seriously, it, it doesn't take very much to skip a rock and do that.
It doesn't.
But they, all of, all of our equipment has.
But you're proud for it. So that's, that's the key.
Best, best we can be. Yes, sir.
We were up on a fire the other night up on Fletcher Park Road and of course it was dark and we were cutting fire, fire line with hand tools and the sparks were flying everywhere. From just the, the hand tools. Cause you can really see them in the dark.
Yeah.
Thanks, Chris.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Okay, we'll move on to the county assessor. Good morning.
I assume you guys have all the mill levy information? So not really much change from last year. And look, I went down two mills rather than two and a half mills. And then otherwise everything pretty much stayed the same. Two mills would get in what they requested in their budget. How much changed from last year? I did add Glendo EMS to the spreadsheet. Just that way they're able to see if they decide to pursue.
What their valuation is.
Yes. So we'll have a new tax district this year, tax district 108. Even though they did not pass any mills, we had to create a new tax district.
So basically the Glendo EMS district would be a portion of the 2F fire district.
Yes.
But also include the town of Glendo. Our 2F does not.
2F doesn't?
2F is just tax district 10108. Glendo EMS is 151 and the new 108.
That's why Chugwater is the only town with five mills as opposed to eight. Your, a town is able to go up to eight if they provide fire protection. If they do not, the max when they can request is five. Chugwater is covered by the Chugwater Fire District.
Go on down to the fires in the territory. They always talk about with the 2F fire district, how much of that comes from the Palmer Canyon area and how much of it comes from the Glendo area. But it looks like based on that Glendo EMS district, it's about half, which is interesting because they always thought Glendo provided way more than they have because of the pipelines and power lines and things up there. Cause Palmer Canyon area doesn't have much. It was certainly, no railroads and pipelines and power lines.
I think the tax distribution table is the, the chart is the most interesting to show the total collected, where it all goes.
And 108's valuation, Steve, is 13, yeah, 13,9243,661.
108 is 2F or is Glendo area?
Yes. So that's north of Fish Creek.
Say it one more time.
13,243,661.
So that's the amount that comes from the Palmer Canyon area of 2F compared to.
Actually Palmer Canyon actually supplies more than the Glendo area, which is probably a surprise to you unless you have members, I would imagine.
Guys having questions regarding the mill levies evaluation?
Yeah, it, it is what it is.
What was the total valuation in county last year?
249.
I didn't, I didn't bring that up. It's me.
250, 114.
For our exemptions excluding veterans, I think we talked about this in another meeting, but the total for exemptions was in actual value, in assessed value, it was 36,701,579. The homeowners was 51% of that. The homeowners exemption, which was the 25% off, the long term homeowners, which was 50% off, was 26% of that and the 4% cap made up the other 23% of those exemptions.
Any other questions about the mill levies? I would consider a motion to certify the mill as presented.
I would move to certify the mill levies as presented.
I second it.
It's been moved and seconded to certify the mill levies as presented. Is there any further discussion? Hearing down all those in favors, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. My favorite.
Oh, yeah, though. That's sick.
I do feel like my office sometimes needs to provide a whole new box of. I just have one, what I provided you is one, one parcel. It's a tax cancellation for tax years 2020 through 2024 and a tax refund for tax years 2020 through 2023. So we discovered through GIS that we had a duplicate parcel that we were taxing. That parcel is actually owned by the town of Wheatland. So we're doing a refund for that. We're gonna cancel tax years 2020, 21, 22, 23, and 24, and then refund the taxes for 2020, 2021, 22, and 23. And they did not pay their tax bill for 2024, which we are canceling that, the 2024 tax bill.
So the total reason for the 2020 to 2023 will be $238 in 90 years' absence?
So what happens if I buy the tax lien against the city of Wheaton property?
So that's how this actually came up was that. And so if, if that were to happen though, when you bought it and then this is what would happen, you would get that, that refund.
Never paid.
That is the beauty of having GIS though, to be able to uncover some of those things. And in years prior, we didn't always draw deeds that came in. Where this particular parcel is at is a very interesting area. And now that we draw every deed that comes into our office, we're able to uncover a lot of those.
Where is this parcel?
So it's over behind like south of where TC Edwards is at, in that little area back there. And this is just vacant land. So it's not like there's a building that you can say, oh, that building belongs to so and so. It's just vacant land. So even when you're out there looking at it, you can't see where, where the lot lines lie to know.
Just like the south of the 8th Street somewhere or there's.
Mm-hmm. Yep. So basically, yes. Yep. So we had a little parcel that many, many moons ago was thought to be right here, an additional parcel. And then come to find out, it's actually part of this whole town of Wheatland parcel.
I'd say that's the importance to have that contest period. So when notices or valuation go out, we're, pay attention to them.
Yeah.
Town of Wheatland doesn't wanna pay the taxes on them. We don't wanna do anything anymore. That's not so. We keep road base and old equipment down there.
Yeah.
Yeah. I only know that because there was a water leak down there.
Frustrating.
Didn't even know it was a town. They'll tell me nothing.
I find out something like that, you know, I feel like.
Like a mushroom.
Ain't it funny how one thing creates three others?
Funny part of it is there's a line that goes from that parcel crossed over to where old, the old vet.
Yeah.
Building was. Don't know where the valve is. Can't find the valve. It's out there in the pedestal somewhere.
Maybe it's.
But Randy knows where it's at. He was there.
It's probably making Chug Creek, Chug Creek. It's making Chug Creek, Chug Creek.
Might be.
Instream flow.
I thought we were having Lake Aliso down there for a while. Wheatland Creek?
Wheatland, whatever. They're all the same past the rail, or around the railroad tracks. Wheatland Creek.
I would entertain a motion for the tax cancellation.
I would have to accept a tax, tax cancellation that presented.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the tax cancellations and refund as presented. Is there any further discussions? Hearing down all those, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
It's just, it is just.
Yeah, this one is talking about a lot of it. At least it's some years.
Thank you very much. Have a good day. Thank you.
Thanks. Next interview, you have a commission here again.
You're a little ahead.
We're a little.
Yeah, a little ahead. I do have, way ahead. I do have that resolution and services agreement, if you wanna consider those.
Yes, I will. Platte County Resolution 2025-14, a resolution approving the appointment of Wendy Curtis Palin as a part-time magistrate for the Circuit Court of the 8th Judicial District, Platte County, Wyoming. Whereas the Honorable Jaclyn K. Brown and Honorable Clark C. Allen, Circuit Court Judges of the 8th Judicial District, that is a tough word, not included in the resolution, have determined the nomination of a part-time magistrate is in the public interest for the people of Platte County. And whereas Judge Brown and Judge Allen respectively have nominated Wendy Curtis Palin to serve as a part-time magistrate for the Circuit Court of the 8th Judicial in Platte County. Whereas Wyoming Statute in Section 59210B requires the Board of County Commissioners of the county wherein the magistrate will serve approve or reject the nomination. Whereas Wendy Curtis Palin meets the qualifications of Wyoming Statute, Section 59201, in that she is both a qualified elector of Platte County and is also a resident of the 8th Judicial, Judicial Court, or District, excuse me. Whereas Wendy Curtis Palin is well-known for her partiality, almost in patience, moral conviction, and solid understanding of Wyoming law. And whereas the Board of County Commissioners believe Wendy Curtis Palin would continue to serve the people of Platte County at the highest level of public service, and that she will be a phenomenal jurist. Now therefore be it resolved by the governing body of Platte County, Wyoming, that the appointment of Wendy Curtis Palin as a part-time magistrate for the Circuit Court of the Eighth Judicial District in Platte County, Wyoming is hereby approved, given our hand seal this fifth day of August twenty twenty-five.
Okay, I would consider a motion on Platte County Resolution twenty twenty-five dash fourteen.
I move to approve Platte County Resolution twenty twenty-five dash fourteen.
I'd second it.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to approve Platte County Resolution twenty twenty-five dash fourteen, a resolution approving the appointment of Wendy Curtis Palin as a part-time magistrate for the Circuit Court of the Eighth Judicial District of Platte County, Wyoming. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Don't waste your time. Just wait for a second.
Yeah.
What's happening for Candy? Yes. I don't see any sincerity to her. Yeah. Do you have any comments on this agreement, Malcolm?
I think it's seventy-five dollar. Getting that steal. Candace proven, she knows what's going on, she understands local government really well. She's effective, industry leader, and she's not the kind, you know, if she's just scrolling for grants, looking for, because she works for other entities also. She's not going to charge all of us that rate, I think she's very fair. One thing I did talk to her about, and she agreed to, is the travel time, and Candy makes a good point that the time she's spending working for us, if it was at a reduced rate, she's screwing herself, quite frankly, but she did agree to the travel time being less than her hourly rate. Yeah, that's, that's. And then, obviously, added in there the administrative assistance for major projects. And so the thought is with the industrial siding division, there's some filings that she'll be able to do that will be cheaper, and then, um, quite frankly, I'm going to need to help. Yeah, no, I. And you are too. Yeah. I think it's written to where it actually will work, instead of just get somebody paid.
Yeah. I just, you know, as I read through it a couple of times, I, I don't know, I seen some value in it.
Yeah.
You know, going forward, I think we're getting a well-experienced, competent person.
Yeah. Who actually has, you know, the biggest part about it, I, I believe, unless I've been bamboozled, that she actually has the best interests of her home. Yeah. In her mind, so. So with that said, I would move to approve a service agreement between Candace Wright as a contractor and Platte County, Wyoming for grant writing and administrative services. Is that right?
Yeah.
I'd second that. Okay, it's been moved and seconded to approve a service agreement between Candace Wright and Platte County for grant writing services and administrative services. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you so much that she can do and bring to the table because of the experience. She's good.
Got your mark. Make an X.
Anything else, Malcolm?
I don't at this time.
This is Chamber, have any updates for us?
Just that we have our pancake, the pancake breakfast on Saturday was a hit, Commissioner Baker came out, flipped some pancakes with us, and so did Senator Smith and Representative Harris, and we're both, oh, there as well, flipping pancakes and, you know, talking, and it was really a good time. We did really well, yeah, we love doing that. Our board volunteered, we had several volunteers, Mrs. Baker also came to volunteer, and needed to help us out, so. Mackenzie was there to help us, so first thing, I was going to tell Georgia, I'm still taking care as much as I can, but she left. We're, we are still looking for an executive assistant for the chamber, as you know, I don't know if you knew, Mackenzie went to First State Bank, she got wooed over there. Corporations tend to do that to us small guys, so, yeah, it's a good thing, you know, she's got up her movement there, and it's a good thing, we're cheering her on all the way. She's still going to be involved, she's contracting, staying with us on payroll to do socialists and things like that for us, so we're very lucky to still have her, as long as we can keep her.
We're still paying her. Really?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. So, you know, we're going through some dangers right now, so some things are on hold, tour to Platte's just, it's going to be good, guys. Um, we're really excited for where we're headed. I sent you all invitations to the, um, meet and greet for Gabrielle Murphy and Lauren Schoenfeld in Glendale, um, so, you know, you can do that. October first, Megan Degenfelder is coming, we're going to do a meet and greet also with her, um, with, um, with the state chamber, they're, they're kind of initiating this for Megan, she wanted to get out into the community, so we'll do that, spaghetti west.
Why is Megan with the chamber?
I'm sorry?
I said, why is Megan coming for the chamber? Is it just to get out?
Yep, yep, she's, she's working with the state chamber, and so it came down this way to, to us, so, um, for different things, um, just again, to see what the community's interested in, what they're looking for. I think to get the word out who she is and what's her, what she's doing as well, um, chambers have connections, so that's what we do. Uh, so next year, I heard somebody else would like to be her pancake flipping, so we'll make sure we extend that out, too.
If you want a bunch of burnt pancakes? Got it. Easily distracted.
Mackenzie was saying this year, she'll keep, she'll keep you in there. She has, she can't blow wrong flipping, so.
That's what I need.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Well, we'd love to have you next year for sharing that part. Because, you know, right now, that's, that's really, it's kind of our slow time, we try to back off for summer activities so that everyone else can do those, but we'll be gearing up, February, obviously, I think, and then the tour to Platte may. We'll steam ahead, super excited who we got on board and, and how it's shaping up.
Well, thanks.
Thanks, thank you guys for your support.
Councilman, do you have any updates for the, from the Town of Wheatland for us?
Well, thank you for the opportunity, I'll keep it short and sweet, uh, just glad we came to a mutual agreement between the two entities here, and, uh, hopefully we could put this bed for a while.
I think actually a lot of good came out of it. On our.
Both sides.
So, yes.
Both sides.
Dispatch.
Yeah, uh, the, uh, other topic we're looking at is, of course, you know, area police officers, so we passed a, uh, a resolution, or whatever you want to call it, for tier, a sign-on bonus, where they would, once they got signed on and asked the, uh, academy, they wouldn't get all the money, they'd have to go a years to get a certain amount, so we're not losing out on officers. Sad part of it is, you all know, you can't compete with the Caspers, Gilads, and the Sherrons on twenty twenty-five thousand, sign-on. Still on track for the water tower being completed in October, don't ask me what day, I'll lie to you. Sixteenth Street, they're again, still shooting for October, so, as we know, it was a muddy mess after the rains and all that, but they've struggled through it, so they're progressing.
Is most of the infrastructure underneath done?
Uh, I would say the majority of it is.
Okay.
Especially after they hit all them water, hitting the waterline rally. I think that was for change order, change orders that we didn't know was there, so.
Do you know where they'll batch the asphalt at?
That what?
Where they'll be batching the asphalt for that project.
No, Tabitha, Tabitha is to go between with White Oak and, um, Oftodoll, so.
Because originally, I think at the meeting they had at Platte Valley Bank, when they kicked off the construction, they had talked about, um, crowls, get out, so we agree.
Using the crowls.
But everything is completely gone from there now, so I didn't know whether they were going to change plans and use Oftodoll to get up there before.
I, I'd be lying to you, Steve, to be honest with you, I don't know, so that'd be a good question for Tabitha, you know. I thought the parade went well, I thought it was, uh, well-attended, I know we passed out a lot of candy as a community, so kids were happy, so the dentist is too.
Our, our tractor only died twice during the parade.
I forgot about that. I told Kevin Brown, let's throw a rope around and drag. But what was your comment? That was even better.
Which one?
Twenty-five percent budget cut.
We were quite hiding back from that just woke street. After the tire shop, I'm like, well, whatever, away we go, you know, the shady side of the street, go.
Heck, I just thought the muddy street on Sixteenth was another fair, then, that's mud bogging down Sixteenth.
Jeb and I decided if it quit, we could push it going downhill, but if we weren't going to push it.
Yeah, we weren't going to push it going back up there. It's not a big tractor, but it's more we want to push.
Thanks, Willie.
Thank you.
Does P C D have an update for us?
Yes, sir.
Good to see you today.
Good to see you, too. I just wanted to give you those a copy of our last minutes and then invite you to our next board meeting, we honored if you came, um, it's the day after your next one, August twentieth, seven AM at Platte Valley, or, yeah, Platte Valley Bank Conference Center, and, um, Mr. Anthony Biacini is speaking for next era, so it's going to be a really good program, and the meetings have been so well-attended lately, um, the school district's always there, the hospital, superintendent, Levi comes from the plant, and so the room's been packed, so it'd be a great way for everyone to see you, and you can hear updates from all those partners, too, so, and I particularly enjoyed watching the chopped competition and you guys judging, so very good job. That's what I had.
Thank you.
You're welcome, thank you.
It's kind of short.
You know what, if people remember it, if it's short. There you go.
It was, it was really good food, really good. Jeb and I judged it, so.
Yeah, there wasn't a loser in the bunch.
It was all really good.
I know, it was, really was. You know, it was kind of amazing to me when they were, they opened up that basket, and they're all given the same stuff, the diversity of which they thought as individual cooks and how they put this stuff together, they didn't know what to bring with them, you know, because they didn't know what, am I getting chicken or, they didn't know, and, you know, that, that to me was kind of the neat thing, is to just watch them as they decided, well, I can do this, and I'm going to do that, and so forth and so on, but it was all good.
Yeah, they were presented with pork loins, green apples, cotton candy, and some Dijon mustard.
Yeah.
Did anybody cry because you guys were too hard on it? Okay.
So could they bring their own ingredients?
Yeah, then they could bring anything they had, but they didn't know, they didn't know what. They didn't know what the four basic ones were, but there was some rock, you know, green peppers, red peppers, and then the spices, and, um, there was some corn on the cob from one, and some rice.
We had fajitas.
Yeah.
What else did we have? Couple of them did just pork loins on the grill, and then we had.
Cabob.
Cabobs.
Or, yeah.
So.
With little potatoes on the stick, you know, and stuff, it was good.
Cotton candy was the sweetener, I'm guessing.
They used it, they used it in different ways, each one of them used it in different ways.
I watched it go in a blender, uh, over there, because it wasn't like a great big thing of it, it was a small thing, um, and it went in a blender that had peppers, and so they threw that in there, and that was kind of a topping, if you will, for a couple of those pork loin pieces, and you could tell it was peppers, but you could tell it'd been knocked, you know, it was a little sweet, but it was okay.
Okay, we'll move on, we have Levi Clark on our agenda for a hospital foundation board, good morning, Levi.
Good morning.
Why don't you tell us a little bit about yourself and why you're interested in being on the hospital district board?
Um, work at Platte Valley Bank, I've been on almost every board around, it seems like, on the Conservation District Board, president of it now, uh, basically why, uh, when doodles ask you to be on a board, it's kind of, get told to be on a board, so, yeah, so it's a good thing, I feel like I need to give back to the community by being on certain boards like that, so happy to help.
What do you know about the hospital district board?
Not, not a lot, other than I help with the Cajunite.
Right, yeah, foundation, excuse me.
Yeah, not, not very much, so I'm interested to learn, you know, Hannah Gutter's on it, I work with her, so she's going to fill me in a little bit.
And there's, um, two different positions available on that board, one is a one-year term, one is a two-year term, do you have a preference one way or another?
Yeah, I mean, as the first heard about it, whatever I can need help.
You have time to do it?
Oh, yeah, I mean, the meetings are at the bay, it's lush, so I walk in, I ain't on them half the time anyways, so.
Just, it's just a formality to add to the board at this point.
Yeah.
But it's great that you're interested in serving the community on boards, and I know you've been on several boards.
Yeah.
It would be nice if we didn't see the same people on every board all the time, but we seem to only have certain people that are interested in being on these boards, so appreciate your service. Do you guys have any other questions for Levi?
No, I don't.
I think he knows what he's getting into.
Yeah. If he doesn't, he can figure it out. Full faith.
Yeah.
Do we want to make those appointments now?
So I would move to appoint Levi Clark to the hospital foundation issue board for a term expiring June thirtieth, twenty twenty-six.
You report it. Okay, it's been moved and seconded to appoint Levi Clark to the hospital foundation board for a term expiring June thirtieth, twenty twenty-six, is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thanks, Levi.
Yep.
Have a good one.
And so, following that, I'd move to appoint Georgia Anne Brown. And so, following that, I've moved to appoint Georgia Anne Brown to the hospital foundation board for a term expiring June thirtieth, twenty twenty-seven.
Second it. Okay, it's been moved and seconded to appoint Georgia Anne Brown to the hospital foundation board for a term expiring June thirtieth, twenty twenty-seven. Is there any further discussion? Hearing that all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
All right, that one's covered. Another nice one.
Okay, we'll move on. We have our county sheriff on our, for the discussion of the CAD, I mean, computer-aided draft, drafting dispatch.
That's what it is to me.
Law enforcement system is easiest way, so, or we pump the brakes on the other one for the time being, until they get some stuff figured out on their side. I reached out to Motorola. They have a couple options with them. Option one is, we continue to be priced at our current price for just a yearly contract. Or if we go into a five-year option.
Malcolm, do you have?
Yeah, I don't have the one year, but I have the.
Yeah, so the one year would just be that normal contract I have to sign every year with them. So, the five-year would bring our costs down, adding stuff that we need and have wanted, but haven't been able to utilize with Spillman. For all agencies, I think it's the current price we are paying now, if I remember correctly. Yeah, so for, so it'd be the same process. They would bill us, we would bill out the agencies. This time I had them include each agency's pricing, since that's not something currently that Motorola does. And we'd be looking right around fifty-eight thousand a year for all agencies combined.
And what is it currently for the one year?
I think it's sixty-something altogether, and then, so. Like currently, Guernsey's, so the, the proposal that's up on the screen right now, that's essentially for the package as-is. The other one that the sheriff sent is the package as-is plus the ability to do E-citation. And so that would be a, the added component, so.
So, that's the added component on the five-year.
So, each of these are five-year.
What do you pay?
So, this one, ours would be. Ours is like thirty-five a year.
Per year.
Per year. The town of Wheatland at the age.
Yeah, no, I, I'm, yeah.
Is that ours, Mac?
The town of Wheatland would be eighty-nine hundred. Currently, they pay ninety-three, ninety-four hundred, the town of Wheatland does. And then Guernsey's would be sixty-five, and they're currently paying, um, forty-four hundred. If you add E-citation, it takes ours to thirty-eight. So, essentially what we're paying.
Three plus three thousand a year.
And then the town of Wheatland would be essentially two thousand more, eleven-six-ten. Remember, the town of Wheatland is currently paying ninety-four hundred for Spillman. And, and I know you saw, I sent an email that, keep in mind, that's on top of, like, we subbed add phones.
Yeah.
Which is in the normal bill, the dispatching fee, and then, um, uh, the actual server maintenance. So, Jordan's cost divided proportionally. And so, Wheatland's portion of Spillman would go to eleven-six. Guernsey's would go to ninety-three, up from forty-four. So, Guernsey's would be a five-thousand-dollar increase to add E-citation.
That's on that second proposal, Malcolm. And then, I'm sorry, is that with the, is that with five-year contract also? Is that the second proposal, the whole thing?
Both of these that he has are five-year contracts. If we just did the one-year, it's just a short piece of paper we've signed every year that says we're paying for our yearly maintenance from August one until July thirtieth.
So, you think the five-year would be cheaper than the year-by-year, or what?
The five-year would be cheaper year-by-year. It's just if, because I know both police departments have wanted to look at different systems. If we're wanting to still try and do that this year, that would be where we're going to have to do the year-to-year contract.
So, do you interject real quick, Mayor? Sorry. When I sent that email, I think there's two questions that have to be answered. The first one is term. Do you do a, continue the year term, pay the annual Spillman now, and then throughout that year, issue an RFP, go about it the right way? Or issue an RFP, have a committee that makes determinations, or a five-year? And then in that five-year span, if everybody's in agreement of looking for something, issue an RFP at the end of this five-year term? So, I think that's the first question you.
Yeah.
One-year or five-year? And then the second question, if you pick five-year, would be which of the two?
So, how much is E-citation worth the?
I know county attorney's offices and courts have, and we also have to be mindful, that's just for the Spillman setup side. We would still have to.
That's a software suite, more or less.
Yeah, so we would still have to get with like Digiticket or Tyler Tech to get the actual site.
Oh.
This is for them to be able to get the stuff from Spillman.
Just a port.
Integration portion of it. Yeah, basically.
So, there'd be substantial cost above and beyond.
We'd have all the hardware that would go in vehicles to print or.
Right.
But that's not.
And then Jordan's fee would probably change.
He won't have to do anything on that side.
He's, he's out on that?
A lot of those hardware packages come with support for the, they're like a trade-in program. You, you buy them, and then they'll, they serve them for so long, or replace them at the end of the, the term, kind of like the Pfizer setup is.
What are we looking at for cost of those?
Uh, he sent me one quote, so this is a year-to-year quote, not, uh, and so it's cheaper if we, again, do it as county-wide, not just each agency doing it individually.
I keep hearing the word cheaper, but I just, I'm not following that in value.
Yeah, I know, I understand that. So, for our portion of Digiticket, if we did the year-to-year, which covers all the equipment, if we break it, all the paper supplies, support services would be an additional ten thousand a year. Wheatland PD would be five thousand a year, and Guernsey would be thirty-one hundred a year.
And that's on top of what?
What that is. This is, even if we went with the Spillman package that has those modules, as they call them in it, that doesn't mean we have to.
Would just give you the ability to do that.
Yeah. It's heavily reduced, because I think it was whatever year that was. I came and pitched that to you guys. It was like, almost thirty thousand just for those modules on Spillman.
So, if we go with the, the E-citation from Spillman, then does each individual agency have the ability to choose whether they want to?
Yeah, so then if they didn't want to wait, because I know lots of times, they've been able to, Wheatland has for a few years in a row, but the pricing was based on if the county and Guernsey bought in, and normally we didn't have the funds. So, if they wanted to get it rather than waiting for the county, they could do so on their own at this point, if we did that route.
Help me understand this. We're talking about spending money on top of other money for two or three line items. Where's, where, where's the, is there a cost savings with that that pays for that? Or is it more a convenience factor, or are we biting off a part of the elephant we don't want to chew up? I don't know.
So, on the citation side, that's going to be a convenience issue, primarily for the courts. It allows them to enter citation eas- easier. There's not the errors that we see in the citations currently. Because if we as admin would have to input for, let's say, a speeding citation, it's going to auto-populate all this data. It would save time on traffic stops or calls that we have to issue citations on. And then the county attorney's office, if we make a mistake, the courts will find the mistake, then the court's got to send it to the county attorney, and then we have to send a letter to the county attorney to fix it, so that would clean up some of that.
Has that been a problem in the past, or it's like a big time-consuming thing?
There is on citations that we're going through. Especially where all the agencies in the county are getting newer officers who haven't dealt with citations. Some of these things as much as becoming a bigger issue.
But if you have an E-ticket and that's not filled out correctly, then that's just going to populate the other stuff with the same wrong info.
So, well, there's spell saves in that, so you just scan their driver's license, like we can do with Spillman currently. It'll pull their driver's license and their vehicle information from Spillman, auto-populate, and then you'll search for your statute number, and then it'll auto-populate that, it'll figure the bond, and it'll put the court date on there for you, so they're not trying to find the court dates and those sorts of things. Realistically, the only issue that was if you fixed the wrong statute completely out of the drop-down menu, that would be the only way you could screw that up.
That's the only human error part of it, if you.
Is flat, getting the wrong information. The courts just went to you filing first of August as well, and so they're filing all papers electronically now. So, the state's moving that way at some point. I don't know if they'll ever come up with any money to stay at a level to help implement this, or just basically demand that stuff.
So, the state wants it, but we got to write the check.
State's wanted it for a while. So, it's been a, there hasn't been any grant money or any, any assistance from the state to help with that. So, there's several agencies that have kind of backpedaled on it and not done it.
Until eventually it's going to be an unfounded mandate.
I would let it go to unfounded mandate, but that's just me not knowing anything about the other issues part of it. It's like suck it. You look at the new guys, they've had a computer in their car from the day they got in there. That goes down, they don't have a clue how to have a two-third job at that point, because they're just, they're lost. For me, it's something that I went three-quarters of my career without, but now I have it, it's super nice. So, when it goes down, it's an inconvenience for me, but I, you still know how to go about your thing, so it's way of the world, I guess, at some level, but.
Mayor Delgado, did you have some questions?
How can I talk Malcolm about this? When he was in Guernsey about that second proposal, did you all read that second proposal? Or did you send out the email on that for the E-citations? And I talked to my chief, and I think that's where we want to go, is, you know, instead of trying to budget more money into our system, try to make a, a different system, and then you just.
Fix the system.
Contact them from there, go on, and see what else we can do from there. But I think we just need to go with that second proposal. That'd be my choice anyway, for our town, because it would not cost that much more money. We've got money already budgeted in for it, so I think that's what we need to stick with, so.
That's honestly what means more than anything else. This is, to me, it's just kind of like, you guys want it, and there you go.
Well, we've already done so.
We don't have, we don't have, I talked to chief. Chief, do you have anything to say?
No, you're, you're on the right track there.
Okay, so, you know, and I think we've talked over and, and that'd be the way, I think we really want to go, if anything, so.
I might have a question for the sheriff here. Is, in reference to the E-tickets and getting those in, is there, obviously with, are some of the tickets going to the county, some of the tickets being municipal? So, is there going to be an added cost for, or a difference with?
Let me double-check, because I had him do this in a rush, because I didn't think about that portion until the last minute. But I know when I quoted the consortium, I think that was four years ago.
And just to be clear, we, in our current budget, we don't have anything budgeted to bring on E-citation.
Yeah, so that would.
We would have the room in the consortium. If you sign the five-year agreement with E-citation, it's on the Spillman portion, but not for the hardware, not for the additional software.
It's just clear.
Oh, it is, yeah, okay. Even if they approve it, doesn't mean.
Yeah.
But if we approve that, then that gives Guernsey.
There's options to expand.
Guernsey can do without the county. I mean, we can sign on to it without the county, right? So, I mean.
Yeah, it's just, this is a, if, if we were all to do it.
Yeah.
It's a highly, supposedly a highly reduced cost, and I know from when I looked at us just doing it as the county, I think that's been five years ago. And then a couple of years after that, it was, I think, almost a ten-thousand-dollar drop for the county. We were able to haul plenty into it at once, but.
Pretty good drop there, actually.
Yeah.
And Wheatland's, Wheatland's good with?
With Spillman.
Staying with this system and.
That's where we kind of want to stay is with Spillman and focus on going the E-citation route and going that route.
Chief, are you thinking five-year?
That would be my, my vote would be the five-year plan and staying with it.
So, we'd stay with the five-year plan and then add the E-citations to that.
Correct.
That'd be our, that'd be our plan also, so. We'll be here in, but, sure. I am at the end, but we've done so much money to Spillman. I mean, it's frustrating at the same time that they're willing to reduce these costs, and so they're doing it because they said we left, even though we never fully did. So, we're a new customer, so they'll give us all these discounts.
That didn't work out too poorly then?
No. It's also frustrating that they've been overcharging for so long. That's, that's. So, like those two modules that I had quoted, it's been a while, but for the E-citation stuff, it was right around twenty-five thousand, thirty thousand total. These two now are only fourteen thousand total. So, in four years and eleven months, do we quit again? Right, and I, that's, yeah. That's what they're training us to do, is like, don't worry, if you leave. Once we get to that, where we have a year left, we all sit down and discuss other options, if we want to stay this route.
At least that's been. They can revisit it, but stay with us.
Yeah. Honestly, you know, five years of a locked-in price is kind of nice. Yeah, because they can't, like they have been. So, I'm, I'm good if you're good. Yeah.
Mayor, you're good with that?
I am.
Okay.
Thank you.
So, Malcolm, do you need a motion for that? To approve?
You, you could. My suggestion.
E-citation.
What it's worth. If that's the direction you intend to go, I'd suggest the county attorney's office review the agreement before any formal action, and then probably the town just, well, it'd be pretty easy for yours, because he's going to do it at the same time as ours. But I think the town in Guernsey probably do a good idea to review it as well. We're, he's the one signing it, but that's my suggestion.
Like sixty-five pages compared to like the five-page one we usually do every year, so.
But my, so the minutes were reflected, we're in Guernsey and the county intend to pursue a five-year option with E-citation. And then at the August nineteenth, we'll consider the agreement. Does that work? So, in the meantime, if you can get it to Doug and Row.
And where's Banner in this, David?
So, Banner doesn't utilize this stuff very well. Currently, they paid us, I kind of bet, several years ago, but their IT department won't talk to ours, so technically they've made at least a few years' payments, but they haven't been able to utilize it, so.
Let's see if we can't get that same arrangement.
Yeah. Then we go to the couple policies. Which one do we got?
I got the, Jim, Jim Hill.
So, this one, we're trying to do similar to lots of the other agencies across the state have did. I don't know how I feel about it fully, but offering pay for individuals who are currently certified to come and work here to help us out. We looked at most of the other places that have did that, and they pay basically either double time or an overtime rate, which, that's how they attract people to come, but to me, it's also kind of a slap to the ones that are sticking it out.
Traveling cursing.
That's exactly what it is.
So, we're talking about traveling dispatchers?
And detention officers, yeah.
And so, my question is, is what happens when our current dispatchers or detention officers say, we're done?
That's where I, yeah.
We're gonna be traveling to make applicants much.
That happens.
Yeah, 'cause I think that's what ran, this new council is short, there's a big one that's had to do it recently, shorted a bunch of cops, dispatchers, and they put this out, and then they basically lost the rest of the police force, so.
So, if you do it, I didn't put this in my memo, but I think there's a few options. I think seriously considering retention bonus for dispatchers at this point, as a thanks for sticking it out. I'd probably advocate for DM be removed personally. These are just suggestions, this is just trying to think outside the box and think collectively about how to address it.
So, with the traveling folks, they wouldn't be eligible for benefit package?
Provided we keep them under 30 hours a week over a 12-month period, which that's pretty easy to do, yeah. Might have a caveat that previous, I mean, so how big is the pool of traveling dispatchers?
It depends. I mean, we haven't put anything out there, so I couldn't tell you. We have a girl that even without this is starting to this week, travel from Portland over to help us out.
I would be almost, I mean, I would be interested, this whole policy, if we're trying to make up for a shortcoming, I would be interested in borrowing employment of traveling dispatchers from previous dispatchers that worked for Platte County.
Right.
If you would like to travel, then go travel, but you're not gonna go work from that side of the street at dispatch for twice as much money.
Yeah.
That happens all the time in the traveling nursing. They quit the hospital, and they get hired back the next day, and then they, not that it means anything, but their attitude changes, and then that's exactly the whole thing starts to unravel.
What are some of the issues with dispatch? How come we're having trouble retaining dispatchers?
Last two, it was a long time coming, and then they just haven't been able to fill any spots. So, Tiffany is doing a big group testing, I think she has four or five people coming in on next Thursday to get testing done. It's the same way with the jail, we have our normal amounts leave here and there, but we haven't been able to fill any of those positions. And we've even tried just giving people a chance that two years ago, we would never gave a chance, so.
So, can this, can detention staff staff dispatch?
No, they had a staff over there. We're down to six over there now, so that's.
I, that's, I'm going somewhere with that. I mean.
If there was a way where we had, if it was in the control room, it'd be super easy, because, so another thing we're looking at is filling some of the current deputy openings for detention, the civilian controllers to get by for now, and we've already gotten a lot larger amount of applications for that than we ever see with deputies, so.
So, I have not thought this through to the end, but we are understaffed in the detention, understaffed in the dispatch, and the two things we need to provide by statutes, place the house for the county and dispatch, right? Things we don't need to provide is housing for federal inmates. Is that on the table for, if we don't, if we cannot staff these two things, if we reduce the workload, is the next place you go for one of those to improve, you know, working conditions so they're safe, or have hours for dispatch? That's, I've been seriously considering that, whether or not that is, because 40 or 40 inmates is a lot, and they're not your regular old.
So, how many people are on a typical crew on a shift for detention?
So, detention has been down for, if we were fully stacked, it would be, we've gone down to three a shift, but if we're so short, we're running two a shift, and then there's an entire shift with nobody that we're filling in with ourselves, or.
Currently, one of those is stuck on control, so they're not even working the floor, so.
So, not holding federal, I think is what you're saying. What would that reduce? I mean, we still have to have the same.
We would still have to have the same staff, that's where my issue always comes up.
Changes, kind of. So, if I'm wrestling a gorilla every day instead of wrestling a chihuahua, maybe that does need a big difference.
Well, actually, the fed inmates anymore aren't as easy as once.
There you go.
So, because I know if we, if we drop the federal contract again like they did when Kabley was in office, we're not gonna get that back, because I had to fight tooth and nail to get that when I switched positions to the jail admin.
So, currently, you do have applicants for both dispatchers and detention officers?
Yeah, detention is more, we have one guy coming in at two, I'm gonna just interview him myself, since we don't have enough to do a full testing, but we have like four or five, I can't remember my last count, for civilian control positions.
So, that would free up the ones we have off the control desk and put them on floor where you dispose a deputy.
So, we're hoping to hire four of those, but then again, we're gonna run into the same issue as with dispatch with that four-on-four-off scheduling thing, so.
And do you have any applicants for dispatch?
Yeah, she has five.
Five or six.
So, we're doing a group testing, I think it's next Thursday, which'll be all the civilian positions, so controllers and dispatchers all at once.
And when you hire somebody for dispatch, how long do they have before they have to be certified to do the cap?
So, that we can push out to two years, and we're gonna do the same, well, that one they have up to two years automatically.
So, when they're on duty and not certified, does there have to be somebody there certified?
No, that's preferential, but it's always been.
There's just temporary certification that allows them to work for up to two years and down, attending the basic.
I mean, especially on the rural counties, that's why post is set up that way, because you'll have patrol officers out working by themselves, not certified, just a temporary cert, those sorts of things. But we're gonna require the civilian controllers to go through the same process as a dispatcher, so they're gonna be on the same pay scale, they're gonna have to go to dispatch basic that way, once we get staff, they can swap over if we need to.
That's probably wise.
And I, for me, I think before I consider policy changes that would potentially cause our dispatchers to be traveling dispatchers.
Yeah.
I think you gotta do something for the ones that stay.
That's where I'd like to get to.
You're gonna lose them too.
For that end, for detention.
That's right.
That's, that's, you know, keep the ones that are.
Because, you know, why would you ever wanna be a full-time dispatcher?
Yeah, make it a lot more money.
Well, even working at a convenience store, I mean, the only, the only ban.
$18 an hour at Exxon.
You know, at some point, we're gonna have to get past this problem of what we can pay versus what we can draw in retention, you know, because not being able to retain them for one reason or another just costs more money.
At the end of the day, it does.
In the end of it, am I wrong?
Nope, training, uniforms, all that fun stuff.
So, how do we get there? That's my question, how do we get there? Where we're not having conversations about when we're down two deputies, or we're down to, in jail, or we're down to, you know, in dispatch, when, you know, one of the primary functions we have is safety.
Correct.
You know, how do we get there?
And I think part of with the dispatching shortage, there's gonna be some discussions with Wieland PD about during daytime hours, since they have two secretaries, having them dispatch non-emergent calls themselves, to kind of relieve some of that stress on our dispatch, so.
You know, Sheriff, it just seemed like, as I look back, we're putting band-aids on public wounds, and it's just not working, you know, for whatever the reason, we're just, we gotta get to that next level, and I don't know, I don't know how to get there.
I don't think any of the counties do currently.
It's not only law enforcement dispatch, it's everywhere.
Scotia has ran into the issue, heck, the sheriff works, all the day chefs, and the few deputies he has left work night chefs. It's the PD, what was that, three years ago? Three, four years ago, upped their wages, so it was like $6 to $8 an hour jump for his guys to leave and go over there.
Kind of they're struggling.
So, the biggest, the biggest trigger for non-retention and hiring and all of that is wages. That's the, that's the big trigger right there. It isn't working conditions, it isn't this, it isn't where we live, it's nothing like that, it's, what can you pay me? And that's where these people are in their mind.
Especially the younger kids.
Yeah, it's all transactional, right?
Yeah.
Commissioners, you know, emergency, up their wages and give a sign-on bonus or anything else, you know, we're still having trouble getting people to come to our police force, so, and it's hard to retain them also, so it, a question that I can't answer, and we try to pay them the best we can over there, and we pay them a good wage, and it's still tough to retain anybody.
Yeah.
You know, I don't know what the answer would be besides, you know.
Well, since the Obama administration, the law enforcement getting vilified, we saw that being planned, and it's never rebounded from there. Immigrations now offering a $50,000 sign-on bonus, trying to, they've even tried to recruit some of our officers when they've been here.
Trying to get Clyde?
No.
Damn it.
No, because now you don't even have to have a bachelor's degree requirement, because they're just trying to mass hire hundreds of thousands of officers.
Well, it's, it's hard to compete with.
Government wage anyway, yeah.
Who's an economist here? Anybody? Seriously, there's no, there's no supply and increased demand, and, I mean, a substantial increased demand. And so, when we talk about cutting services, this is actually what that looks like, right? So, this is what property tax production looks like. Guys, I want you to take note. This conversation stems from a lack of funding, and the sheriff, to his credit, is bringing in 800 to a million dollars a year, I think, roughly, from the feds. And so, that doesn't cover, you know, half of his budget, but that's half of his budget, right? From outside sources other than property taxes. So, this is, that conversation we're talking about, reducing services, it's starting right now, it started two, three months ago. And so, when I, when I hear that these are real consequences of what the state's doing, and it's gonna get worse, the sheriff's department, the people do not, people in general don't wanna work at the sheriff's department because of a lot of things that David's brought up, and a lot of the things that everybody else is, you know, the wage is not much different than somebody working at a convenience store. And so, when you're getting, literally, your ass handed to you every day by people who have nothing to lose, that's a hard pill to get somebody to swallow, say, don't worry, you're doing a good job. That doesn't work after a month, after two days sometimes. I'm off my soapbox now, but that's a real, that's a real consequence of what we're, what we're doing, so.
You know, and it forces us to look at stuff like this, which could create more jeopardy.
Anyway.
Anyway.
Because we've discussed that before, Malcolm, and I have about doing sign-on bonuses. We do those, that's a slap in the face to people who have been here more than two years, so.
You know, when we started budget workshops months ago, I just, you know, in the back of my mind, I kept saying, how, how do we, how are we gonna be able to find some money to retain some people? And then, how do we do it? The employees look at their paycheck in June's, it's more than July's. I mean, everybody gets a decrease in, in their paycheck because of their insurance participation.
Correct.
You know, yeah, it's, bottom line is a revenue situation. Employee, that's a hard thing to look at, now doing the same amount of work and bringing home less dollars.
Less money, yes.
So, on the travel policy, what if, just to think outside the box, because I think there is some incentive for those that are currently working there to have some time off, some reprieve, I think. The real issue to me is if somebody's sick or, God forbid, they gotta burn a vacation day, that's where I'd be really hurting. Instead of one and a half or two times rates, instead of this, what if there was a flat $150 travel incentive per 12-hour shift work? Something that incentivizes somebody who's a currently certified dispatcher in the area assisting, and maybe that's more palatable to current dispatchers. I have to think at some point, they would want us to do something to help.
They could do something to help them, but we, and then you gotta do enough to attract people to come down here to do it, too. I mean, you're not gonna get people to drive halfway across the state to do two or three shifts just because they're making the same they are at home.
So, and I don't have a dog in the fight, I just am trying to.
The weird balance, I think, of.
The balance of the ones you got without making them feel like they're getting overgrown.
It's gonna be hard to attract, even.
Having enough attraction to attract here.
Because we're already trying to compete with, like you said, the Casper, the July, the Cheyenne.
And that's the.
And we can't compete with them.
And if they're offering this for the travelers, I mean, we're not gonna be able to, if they're gonna go there, they're not gonna come here.
A girl coming from Taurington, it's actually like $5, $6 an hour less than she makes over there to come over here, but she's wanting to help Mars out, because she knows a few of them.
Does the sheriff's department and the PDs participate, like in the career fairs that the schools have?
Yeah, we are.
Because I, you know, I think that for a young person just getting out of school, if I'm looking at going to college and going in debt for several hundred thousand dollars for an education, or I have a chance to take a full-time job with a full benefit package, that would be attractive.
See the benefits as a, at that, no?
But maybe it's not.
They look for the money. So, when we go to those, we go to U-Dub and PD, PWC over there.
I'm thinking before they ever go to.
Well, so we go to the local schools, as they have, those ones, they don't even stop by our booth, so I stopped putting our, when our wage was up, and so when you're looking, you come out of high school and go to, gosh, I think it's Broomfield, Colorado, and make $95,000 a year, they don't pay attention to cost of living, they just look at money.
That's true. Yeah, that's true.
She'll page it on what it actually is.
My little soapbox here goes back prior to that. It goes back to this generation, you talk about these younger kids. It goes back to not an education, but an indoctrination that they've been given, which is BS, and it starts at a very young age of, you have this value, you have this value, you have this value, to the point of where they're untrained. to the point of where they're untrained, but they're told they have all this value and they demand it, and here we are.
Correct.
Does that make any sense?
Oh, yeah.
That's, I'm off my soapbox now, but that's.
I mean, I know people that are my age that have hundreds of thousands of dollars in student debt. And if they would've just went to work right out of high school and worked for the county, they'd be retired by now.
Or trade school.
Yeah, trade school or.
Exactly.
And then, and I don't know how we highlight that to those kids.
May I mind if I dive in a little bit? Cause I can talk a little bit about this. So right now, we're having a very, a very robust conversation on the state level because there's been a push that we, you have the halfway and you graduate high school and you go to University of Wyoming and you get a degree. That's what you do. Well, I'll be honest with you, I've got two kids. I got, my daughter goes to University of Wyoming next week. She will never pay for her education, her violin will pay for her education, it's amazing. But my son, on the other hand, I will never even suggest him go to University of Wyoming because the reality is his design is very much more a hands-on. Well, the problem is, is our normal educational system right now has a single pipeline design. We are shifting it to a dual pipeline design. When they come into middle school, our, our plan is when they come into middle school, we're going to be putting them into a place of making a decision. Opening it up, hey, this is how much money it's gonna cost you to go to these school situations. This is what you're gonna get out of it. And that's where we will sit there and say, hey, you know, Wheaton PD or Gurnsey PD or Platte County Sheriff's Department, you can come on and this is what you can do. This is what you're gonna get paid. We can get you with a plumber, an electrician, an HVAC guy. This is what you can do, this is what you can get paid. You know, you really think you need this? Well, then let's do this. One of the things we're pushing is every single graduating senior has the opportunity to get CDL before they graduate high school. Because, you know, that's giving them a leg up in my, like, so these are, we are, we are recognizing it. I mean, I've talked with Megan Dakenstolter about this at length and they definitely are realizing that what we're giving right now has not served us 100% how we thought it would. And that's not knocking the schools, cause there's, there's nothing. But I'll be honest with you, I've, I've got a couple of degrees of which right now I'm not really using anymore. So, I mean, there's a point where there is that, where you have to ask the question, why, why have we really told us that this is the answer when the money isn't lining up with it? So I, I think we are pushing that way. I think the biggest thing, and Sheriff Russell said it, under, under the Antifa, DLM and the Biden administration, every single kid, whenever I was a kid, played and they were, they were a cop or a fireman or something like that. You just don't see that anymore. And so there's a part where we need to shift that back and there has to be a respect and honor put back into our amazing men and women that fight for us every single day and keep us safe. And that doesn't just happen on forums oil, that happens just down the road as, as you guys deal with stuff that we don't wanna deal with. Let's just be honest. It's 2:00 AM and you're out on the interstate dealing with it or on that county road or whatever it is. So I think that goes back to a call for the, I don't know, I got my soapbox now.
If, if I could bring up something that you've probably already considered is, is remind these kids of total compensation per hour. Okay, yeah, Exxon pays $18 an hour, but with the state's compensation and retirement and health insurance, what we pay is, is $27 an hour, okay? And what you said, Steve, was, I, I went to work right, right out of high school, almost 19, and it paid real well, to be able to leave the game early. You know, that's an enticement there. I have a lot of friends that have, are in the state retirement system and, and can, can leave the game early. When I was a lot younger, you know, they would talk about, kids would say, well, I'm going to college for pharmacy. Yeah, buck off, $30 an hour. Well, that was it. Pretty much that was it for your compensation, okay? The little mom and pop shops cannot pay you your, your, your benefits that you're going to get from maybe a Walmart or from a UPS or a teaching degree or something like that. So if that hasn't been considered, maybe, maybe we could let these kids know that your total compensation with everything is worth a lot more than what the, the convenience stores pay.
Plus the county might buy a dog for you.
A what?
The county might buy a dog for you.
I think, I think the challenge there is getting those kids to see into the future, you know? Cause when I was that age and my kids, and I know all you guys who have kids, probably none of them think about insurance. Cause they're young, they're healthy, they don't care about insurance.
I hope so, don't you? And I'm in it first.
They don't care about retirement, cause retirement's something that's so far out that they don't even think about, but.
And with, with the kids entering, there's an interest in, in military now, again, the tides have changed. And two of our boys, within five, six months of, five, six months of graduating from high school, they were for the most part self-sufficient, okay? And so, you know, being able to tell that to, I, I think that the thinking out here is, is changing that for, that, that things can be done and a man is a man and a woman is a woman. Let's stand on your own feet and let's, let's provide for yourself.
All right, with all that said, it should be easy to find a dispatch now, right?
I'll step down, I'm sorry.
No, 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 they're good points.
But the thing of it is, little Platte County here, we're competing with three different entities. Sheriff's Department, municipalities and the state parks.
And ICE. Gally, Troll.
Four, five.
Yeah.
Thank you for that.
Yeah.
And everybody's got a different base scale. Like Roy says, benefits is, they need to be looking at.
Yeah.
You know, the two words that grind on me more than anything anymore is, it's tough. Those two words really grind on me because it's like, it's, this is real and this is where we're at. But to keep having to say, you know, it's tough, we gotta have a conversation about this, we gotta work through this. When can we change that, when can we change that from it's tough to it's possible? You know, that's where we gotta go. And just stop backing up, backing up. Oh, that's tough. Well, why is it so tough? Why is it not possible? What do we gotta do to make it possible? And it takes a lot of different minds to do it.
Well, the key to the thing, for instance, maybe I'm off track here, they're bringing all this AI into Cheyenne and Laramie County. They're gonna deplete their water supply in Harvey. Where we at? We're 70 miles up the highway here. Could we not sustain an AI?
Our water supply's depleted.
But you know. I, I understand, same token, you know, yeah. Somehow we gotta get industry here.
Yeah.
Get people here.
So what are we doing in the short-term problem?
Well, I like your idea better of just a one time. Like a bonus payment for, per shift rather than. Cause when I think our dispatchers look at this and say, hey, this guy's traveling and maybe he can have again as much as I am. I shouldn't be traveling.
Or, or even to the point where you do, maybe to your point, maybe it doesn't, maybe it costs more $150 to come down here for a couple of shifts. Maybe you tie up like maybe 10 shifts or you get some, like you're like, we're 20 shifts for a thousand dollars for sure. You know what I mean? Maybe that's my problem, but I think that the latitude to go will give you a relocation, a temporary location, maybe that's what you call it, bonus for that. And it's dependent on, I'm not sure how much to give, but certainly not an hope intended question, but somewhere within this range.
And then look at something for retention bonus for the people that are staying.
50 bucks a day just to deal with the temp.
Yeah.
You know, maybe that's, that's, I don't know, you would know what would motivate those guys more than anybody up here. If it's money, that's great. If it's not money, maybe we explore that, but that's, I'm looking at you because you probably do know what is more important. If it's work environment, then it's something else. If it's money, then that's probably something.
Currently in those two areas, to attract, it's money. I know the detention side for retention, it's money. And then dispatch and detention, it's that, they're just getting burned out.
All right, yeah, well, that's, that's, you can't, you can't actually fix burnout with money. You can't, you can't fix burnout, you can't make somebody do better at their job because of money. Money doesn't solve those two issues. And so you gotta look somewhere else. It's just like the mayor said, it doesn't, you know, throw money at it, doesn't fix all the problems. Maybe, so I'm looking at you, you go, here's what they are missing or what I've heard. This is probably what they're saying, you know, cause they probably won't tell you right away. I'm unhappy because of this.
I am encouraged that you have some application.
Yeah, me too.
So.
Cause I think you've spent time at dispatching and we're short on you.
Yeah, we're, last week actually, and that's a little rough since I don't do it all the time.
Yeah, no, I appreciate that. I appreciate that.
Definitely don't realize what it is where you're sitting in that chair.
No, I think that gives you an appreciation for maybe what they do value. So you can maybe start chipping away, this is, this actually looks like an incentive to stay here. This actually is an incentive to stay here, so I think that's good.
So you wanna come up with a. Would, would that have to be a personnel policy change if you did something like that?
I don't think I suggest, I don't think it has to be, but I'd say in the meantime, if the sheriff's okay with it, I'll talk to a couple of dispatchers who are currently here and see how offended they would be about trying to offer some incentive for folks to come in.
So, so the next question is, is this two weeks before we meet again, before we can sign something that's concrete? So if you give authority to Malcolm, maybe you get something temporary bonus?
And truth be told, the reason I say I don't think you have to, I think, you know, once you appropriate that budget, the sheriff's got some certain latitude. To me, that.
Yeah.
Policy was fairly significant in that, it's just fairly significant. But if you're talking shift bonus.
That's within your.
Kind of an exigent circumstances within its budget.
Where we have that, had some of those positions filled even since July, we have.
Now, on-call is very different because that has a, that has a long-term and a county-wide impact, you know, long-term. Financial liability, so I would not be comfortable saying any of us have the ability to just institute on-call without a personnel policy change.
I agree.
Yeah.
So what are your thoughts on on-call?
I don't think it's actually a bad idea. I think the, I think if I'm asked to be on-call, I, most people are told, you're on-call. They go, okay, that's fine. But the, the $2 an hour, whatever we're talking about, that's a, that's an agreement between me and you saying, you've gotta stay sober, you've gotta stay available. You can't go to Denver, you can't go to, hardly go to Glendale, you know what I mean? So that actually is more of an incentive than you think. I go, shit, I'm on-call this weekend. No, honey, go ahead, I'll stay here. So I don't have as big an issue with the, you know, on-call, you know, fam, because I think that probably is fair, more fair to us than it is to the on-call person. I think we should probably have something like that. If we do expect them, I don't think it takes away also from us to asking guys to come out when there is an emergency. We still have a very responsive workforce, especially Roden Bridge Sheriff and stuff like that. When they go, people's lives are in danger, they're not gonna balk at going out because they weren't on-call. I don't think so anyways. So I am actually, I don't think it's such a bad idea, but we have to use it as we need it, you know, maybe at our discretion.
I mean, there's people all over community that are on-call every day, all day long.
Yeah. And the big difference, and Ian's nailed it, is it's always just kind of been the honor system around here that somebody says, yeah, I'll pick up that phone call and show up. Especially Roden Bridge guys are really good about it. There's super happy weather coming, probably gonna get a phone call to come out. This is, we are requiring you to be available, so if that phone rings, you have to show up. And I think the more I thought about it, you might need a little massaging because if you think about fare or maintenance, there are some of those things that they're able to answer just on the phone and not physically respond. And so if they're answering that phone call and not physically responding, like if it's a call, where's this light switch at the Agriplex? Is that worth two hours of compensation?
But to me, it's, that's a Jim, he's salaried, that's part of his duties. Do you still have to write on-call for a salary employee?
I was thinking for the fare manager that's.
Yeah, well, I mean, yeah, I mean, so does a salary have to be on-call? Be paid on-call?
No.
I always think that's a.
But she's non-exempt.
Yeah, but Jim's not.
So anyway, those are some considerations, but I think this one's in a better place personally. And it's something we can always adjust down the road if it's getting abused.
I think, just reading through it, the one concern I had was that if somebody was on-call, they have to be 30 minutes from their duty station. Do all your deputies live within 30 minutes of their duty station?
Yeah.
Cause I know there's a lot of people, I mean, it takes me longer than 30 minutes to attend.
Yeah, yeah. What do you, cause I think there has to be a balance between a reasonable expectation. You know, if an inmate's gotta go up to the hospital and we need somebody in here now.
I mean, is that gonna put restrictions on where our employees can live?
No, I don't think so. I could still, we just go back to common sense. If you that live 45 minutes away, an hour away and you're on-call, that's gonna be the acceptable time and we'll just have to realize we're gonna have to figure it out in that in-between time.
Right, you're not gonna put somebody, if it's something that we have to be there by the minute, you probably.
As long as they're in the county, we're not gonna ditch, so.
Right.
And I just, that, it's stated that in the personnel policy. Have to be within 30 minutes.
Yes, you're absolutely right. So do you wanna adjust it from 30 minutes?
I mean, I, if you think that's reasonable, I mean, to be flexible, I don't have a problem with it.
Okay, can be. I mean, we could do 45, so if you live in any, Glendale, Gurnsey, Chugwater.
30 minutes would be a question for me, from kind of phone call to get in the car to get here, unless you're moving.
Just 15 minutes give you time, so.
Do you have to be dressed when you show up to your duty station?
Yeah, no.
It's preferred.
Save 30 seconds for me. I, I think, I mean, to that point, it's, I think that we have enough good sense.
I was just thinking, you know, I'm on the volunteer fire department, I get a page. It'd be 10, 15 minutes before I get all my gear on and I'm able to leave the house.
Yeah.
So.
So what's that balance between needing people at the jail, but giving them the flexibility to get ready? Cause I think you have to put a time in there and the worry is if you put it at 30 and say, oh, we're good-natured, we don't.
So maybe you change, maybe you change it, you can, maybe you change it to, and it's not a time restriction, but you can't be outside of the, the real problem is that you can't be in Denver while you're on-call.
Yeah.
Right.
Either, either in Denver or.
Cheyenne or anywhere.
Enjoying an adult day.
Exactly. Yeah, so I think maybe you change the time limit to say.
We've got some options for us, like get a pole control guy in to cover the desk or whatever until people leave.
The on-call position must be stationed on-call in a place within the county or a place, you know, maybe not even the county, cause if you're out hunting, the best thing, if we have the discretion to ask you to be on-call, if the guy's gonna go hunting, you either can't go hunting or you have to, you know, and so when you get called out, that is a big problem if you're not there. And so that kind of violates that agreement.
Well, and I think this was our scheduling currently, they allow people, they just have to let us know so that way if something happens, that they'll trade shifts with each other. I think on-call would be the same way.
We can work on this one.
Okay, I think it's half forward.
But at least knowing kind of a direction you guys wanna go in your concerns is helpful.
I think that's good.
Gotta start somewhere. Anything else?
Should be headed for this guy.
That's plenty for two weeks' work, just, you know. Don't, don't make something else.
Thanks, guys. He will move on, we're running a little bit behind, so we'll move on to a segment.
Thank you, good morning. I know you don't see Barb Fletcher's name there, but she asked me to just give her a couple of minutes to make some statements, and I'm gonna do that in as much as everybody's been speaking this morning, so Barb, go ahead.
I just wanted to say three little things. One of them is, we're talking about money here, this is a big money thing, we're, we're back to wind, solar. Money is the big issue, but there's also water, and we've talked about that already, you've addressed that this morning, this county doesn't have any. And so, if we bring in something that uses water, where do we make that up? And if it changes the underground's water levels, where does that go? Secondly, if I am dumb enough to build a home in the shadow of a wind turbine, that's my problem. But to be told that one is going to be set upon my house, that's a different issue. That's, that's tyranny. And thirdly, there are, I, I have four acres, I'm not gonna benefit from this in any way directly. Bringing money into the county does affect me. I've called the ambulance before, and I understand time lapses and, and budget cuts. But, um, because this won't affect me income-wise, I'm being asked to be a lab rat without compensation. That's all I have. Thank you. Thank you. And I have an appointment, so.
Good, thank you.
Yes. I'm gonna leave you one.
We've had troubles with the nose this morning, I'll tell you what.
That smoke out there is vicious.
I wanna jump on what Jeb said, indoctrination. And it has happened, Jeb, and I think part of it is that, is, you asked me weeks ago, why am I, why do I come here? And my answer was the climate hoax. And that, that, the wind and solar green, they're not. But that's, they convinced generations that we have to worry about, the sky is falling, okay? So that's the indoctrination that a lot of people have. And who made the most money, who's made the most money? Al Gore, millions if not billions, by going around and talking about this, but he really doesn't care about all this. But that's just to kind of introduce, um, so I think we talked again about, I'm gonna talk about three things this morning. One is, um, communicating about wind. And every single week, when you start doing the research, you find more and more things bad about the windmills, about the solar farms, and about the best units. And last, or yesterday, I was given something I'm gonna share with you, and it's really common sense. And, um, a new friend of mine, Benny, um, this, these are Benny's drawings. And pretty much, he nails it, bad, bad, bad. And he talks about, the, the second one in the middle, I believe, is lightning. We've seen these things happen, these are all bad. Killing the birds, we've talked about all of this, the infrasound, and then the little business at the bottom is the construction coming in and all the compaction of the roads, okay? So this is kind of common sense right here, um, I think you kind of nailed it. So it's amazing what comes out of children's, the babes of mouths, comes the truth, right? And that leads me to say, share with you, that we had a wonderful open house in Chugwater on the 24th. And Steve was there, thank you for coming, Steve. We had a wonderful turnout. We had senators from Goshen County and reps, reps from Goshen, we had Black County reps and senators, uh, we had
What was the, what was the meeting on, sorry, I missed it, what was, who put it on, and what was it about?
I think, remember that flyer I sent you?
Yes.
On the 24th, it was an open house.
Put on by?
Barb actually put it together.
Okay.
She, she, from the town of Chugwater. And we had it at the Chugwater Community Center, and it was open to the public, anybody could come. And we had static displays, we had video displays, we had speakers, and so a lot of information was shared, and that's a good thing. And, and we, we've thought about that, and we're thinking, you know, we need to spread this word, and so we're, we're kind of working on that just to let you know, and, and believe me, you will get more flyers, when, when the flyers are ready, we'll let you know.
I, 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 I'll let you know right now, I'm probably not gonna go to any one of them. We've actually just been, I don't know, served is the right term, but notified that when there's two of us in a group together in the public, that's, we might get sued, so there's, that's in the back of my mind, I probably won't be showing up to any events. You know what I mean?
Unless you, unless you speak to these guys ahead of time and say, can I go to this one? You guys don't go? I mean, you could, you could arrange to be there, it's great information, and so far, one person has showed up.
I agree, if two of us show up, we might get sued. Isn't that right?
No. No, that's, that's way out of context, so if you have an illegal court meeting that's not posted to the public, then, yeah.
So we have to post it before we show up?
No, what you have to do is make sure you're not conducting private or county business in a public setting.
How do we prove you were not conducting county business?
That's up to you to prove.
Exactly, I don't really wanna go to court, so at this point, I'm not interested in going, if, especially with this group. You know what I mean? If we get served saying that if we're doing our duties in the public.
No, you can do it in the public sphere, if you're out in the public.
That's my point, so we haven't done anything behind closed doors. And we're still getting letters from paralegals?
No, um, I'm actual lawyer.
Either way, my point is made more clear by that, we're actually getting served by lawyers. Okay, now we're left for that? That's my response to that.
So you don't intend to show up at anything, any public meetings, any open houses?
I intend to, to not be involved in Nextera meetings outside of this room, or the other side of the equation outside of this room. That's my only way I can reduce the liability. If, if we have an aggressive, litigious whoever it is, easiest thing for me to go is, I don't wanna, I don't wanna get ink on my fingers. The easiest response to me is, hell, I didn't go, I don't know what happened there. See what I mean? I appreciate the notification of the public meeting.
That wasn't at me, so I, I did not
I'm looking at you because it has Platte County Record Times on it.
Right, yeah, but it was because of the WPA, not us.
Are you, are you representing the Platte County Record Times?
I represent the Platte County Record Times, but I do not represent the WPA.
Don't know who that is.
Wyoming Press Association.
Okay. All right. Good deal, let's move on.
Okay, um, so, second point, um, is, um, I want to talk to Ian as the planner. As the planner now, because we don't have a planner, and as you know, we have been working really hard on revising the outdated wind regulations, wind sighting regulations.
Yes, I agree.
And trying to bring them, even people in the industry that we've heard, oh, those setbacks are way not good enough. Okay, so that's one of the things we've, we've been working on, and other things. And Jeb, I loved your question this morning, when you asked the road guy, or somebody in here, do you have a site plan? I thought, oh, yeah, that's really important, and so we have put that into the regulations, but
Which it's already in the regulations.
And really
There's actually a preliminary site and a permanent site plan.
The guy this morning didn't have one, or didn't know about it, or something.
That has nothing to do with Nextera, and that doesn't have anything to do with wind.
No, no.
But it's in the regulations.
But I thought that was absolutely a really good question, when you're talking to somebody about
They're gonna run this power line, and how it relates to our roads, and that's that, that's where that stops.
Right, no, it's a good question. Do we have a site plan, it's very important to have that site plan ahead.
And our regulations require that. Yeah, they currently require it.
Right, but there was no record of a site plan, right? We didn't have it, or hadn't seen it this morning.
So you're talking about two different things, you're talking about two different things.
The Black Hills. Who, who is giving that?
Road and Bridge.
Right, okay, anyway.
And this was in response to road use agreements only.
Right, and there's road use agreements within the wind sighting as well.
And has nothing to do with permitting or anything else. To a degree.
Yeah.
To a extent, yeah, okay, because I think it's separate, isn't there a separate road use agreement? With the wind sight, wind sighting?
We don't have any agreements, we don't have any agreements.
Yeah, we don't know what the project is.
Except that an application from them.
Right.
Right, good, well, that's
But in, in our regulations, they're required to have preliminary site plan, and also a permanent site plan.
Right, that's another question, okay, so have you had the preliminary?
We don't have an application, do you know what they're gonna do?
They haven't even done the preliminary yet?
So until we get an application from somebody
Have they done the preliminary application yet? They're not required to.
That's, that's why we still work on planning and zoning regulations.
Perfect, okay, so, Ian?
Yes.
Back to planner.
All right.
What are your office hours? And can we meet later this week, Thursday or Friday, to turn that into you, for maybe half hour, 45 minutes?
Maybe get me, get with me when I'm not a commissioner, and seriously, because I need to put some thought into it.
Okay, can we meet after the meeting is adjourned?
I will be a planner after meetings are, yes.
The next scheduled planning and zoning meeting is next Tuesday night.
Right. Yes. I can't call him, some, I can call him
The Tuesdays between
I mean, he can call me, and he, and the planner can also call workshops, correct?
Yeah.
I guess we were then, under the understanding that since you're the planner, we turn it to you. Are you saying that we just turn it into the Planning and Zoning Committee? Just for clarification?
Either or, either or. Typically, what happens when we have a planner, he takes that information to them. He's basically, uh, you know, organizes and gets the information, and they're the ones that actually make the decision. The planner doesn't make the decision on what our policies are.
Right, we, we assumed that we were to turn it into Ian, I'm kind of
You can do it that way.
I'm like a dump truck, pick up stuff and I dump it off at planning and zoning.
Or would it be better if we did it, I mean, just, we'll talk afterwards, right?
Yes, I would
Would that, would that work for you?
Yeah.
Okay, 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 and, um, just one other thing, um, I just Okay, so three weeks ago, um, after the commissioners' meeting, um, there was some sort of meeting out at the Agroplex. And I somehow, earlier in the week, I thought I'd heard about it, so I walked over there thinking I could go to this meeting. And it was Nextera, so we wa, I walked in the lobby, and I was stopped, and I, they said two things. They said, um, this is an invitation meeting only, and it is a training session for firemen. And I thought, you know, this whole wind, solar, best thing, there's a lot to do about fire in this, because there's a lot of chances for fire. So I thought, well, I would like to know the information. And so my question, I guess, is, and then right, we saw Jeb and Steve come right after us, we couldn't go in, but y'all went in. So I, I'm wondering if you would be so kind right now to share with everybody what, what happened at that meeting? Because that fire business seems to be now pretty important to the public.
So basically, they just presented information on the battery storage system and firefighting procedures, and basically, it was a fire training. I went on, I'm on, I'm on the volunteer fire department, so I was actually invited on that, yeah. That's pretty much what it was.
Did you also have an invitation, Jeb?
Yes. That was an email-type invitation, it wasn't like something you opened in the mail, you know? That's, and it wasn't an official meeting, we didn't call the meeting, we didn't call the meeting. It was their meeting, they rented the facility, they, you know, invited officials and first responders, if you will, that's, that went. We had zero control over any of it. No, I will say Jeb and I were invited to participate in a, um, wasn't really a meeting, but it was a place where we did make a decision, and that was the CHOPs challenge at the county fair. So we're a little bit sensitive, because somebody in the paper made a complaint to the Wyoming Press Association about us having any meetings, and we've never called any legal meetings.
Right, the complaint's not large companies, the commissioners' complaint is large companies, Nextera specifically.
So we got a letter from
You got a letter which says
Saying what are we gonna do to remedy this? It wasn't our meeting.
Right, but because you guys were involved in
We, we go to meetings all the time where one, two, three of us are present that aren't our meetings.
A question for you then, a year ago, um, we invited you to the hand-counting session, and you guys said, because of the public reading, meetings and optics, we were just giving you a training session on how to do hand-counting, you wanted it opened up to the public, we didn't have a problem with that, we opened up the public. So tell me what the difference between that is, because we provided it for you, we invited you, and what's the difference with Nextera? And the other question I ask is, could you go into details of what they talked about, the fire that you learned?
So, so the difference to me is, we got a lot of public that were interested in your hand-counting meeting, and they wanted to know why they were excluded. I had numerous calls that people wanted to be there.
Sure.
And so I said, well, if I'm going, I guess anybody can go.
But there's numerous people that wanted to attend the Nextera as well.
Who okayed that, that meeting? This is where it comes down to for me, who okayed, who okayed opening it up to the public? Did Steve ask you?
Steve asked us to open it up.
And then who opened it up?
We did.
There you go.
Okay.
So
Could you, did you ask Nextera to open the meeting?
I never had anybody ahead of time ask me that they wanted to attend.
We made our own tech known, Tony Potts was well aware, so we, we let him know two weeks before the meeting happened when he and I discussed it.
And, and he never said anything to me.
And I told Jeb as he came in that we were denied access.
It doesn't, it doesn't even come down to that, it's somebody who has, let's change the words.
And, and the meeting at the Forage Building on firefighting, it, it discussed techniques for fire suppression on battery storage units.
You're given generals, can you go into details, like what?
Well, I didn't take specific notes, but
It was, it was an overall, kind of a general thing.
I mean, they talked about, don't spray water on these batteries or units.
The obvious common sense stuff is really
They talked about how they're, they look like a comic shipping container, when they're actually specifically built for the purpose that they're intended for. So they're, don't go into the side of them.
Yeah, and the big hoopla about the Arizona disaster, um, that has been turned, when they had fired one or two boxes down there. Any fireman with a quarter of a brain is not gonna go up to a box that's got batteries in it and open the friggin' door to allow oxygen in there, that just doesn't compute to me. Research has shown that there was plausibility on both sides, but what fireman would do that?
And to that point, in case there is someone out there that would do that, we, you know, you would hope that we, there would be some training out there to help them make decisions.
That was the purpose of the meeting, that was the purpose of it.
But back to your point about which, which meetings are public and which are not, it comes down It comes down to who decided that they were public. They're not our meetings, the meet, the hand counting one was not our meeting, it was your guys' meeting for our benefit, correct?
For Tan, were you talking about the hand counting or the Next Era?
The hand counting was your meeting for our benefit, yeah. So, so, and then you guys opened it up to the public. So if we, if we change the word and say, I was denied entrance to a wedding at the Agroplex. Okay, that makes sense. Because the people who were getting married did not decide to make it open to the public, right? You guys decided to make it open to the public, I think that shows, you know, good job. But at the end of the day, it is open to whoever is putting on the meeting to either open it up or decide who's going to show up.
Okay, so you're saying Next Era not opening the meeting is not a good job?
No, no.
I actually asked them why it wasn't open to the public and they said, we wanted to have a chance to meet with professionals. Without the drama from non-professionals. And be able to get this information put across to them.
So that's opposite of what they told us at the paper. We have several emails from their upper management, just so you're aware.
Okay.
And that's what they told me.
Yeah, so I'm not contending that what they told you is that, we're letting you know.
And I can understand that.
So I'm just letting you know what they told us is completely different from what they probably told you, from the subject.
At the end of the day, the purpose of the meeting was to train firefighting personnel on safety and dealing with these systems.
Well, they need for two weeks, we had intimate. Cover that meeting as we do every other county emergency management meeting and training.
That's great. I applaud you for doing that.
Lots of emergency management meetings where we did planning and I've never seen the paper there.
Well, sometimes you can't meet, make all of them, but yeah.
I'm glad, I'm glad you're chasing down that stuff, I think that is important.
Right.
Why are they putting on training sessions when they haven't even applied for a permit yet?
You'd have to ask them.
Anyway, you can't talk to them.
Their checkbook, you know, renting a place and why they do what they do. It's their business, I'll put it that way.
So, so I want to, big picture, guys. We are not the bad guys here. We are not even the good guys here. You know, because that changes, right? To, to you guys, we may be the good guy, we may be the bad guy. To Next Era, we may be the good guy, we may be the bad guy. We're neither. We're, we're a, we're political seat, right? But we should be agnostic and not give two dams about what they're doing as long as they do what we ask. And we shouldn't treat them different than anybody else. The same as we don't treat anybody else differently because of what they do, right? So, we're not, we're not pushing this either way. With that said, some companies are better to deal with than others. I don't know if Next Era is or not. I have almost no contact with them. On purpose, because I don't want there to be some public viewing of they're talking to me. And that, that all of a sudden puts doubt in your guys' minds, right? So it is good, it is a very good thing if we are not out of that. Or not, not seeing, either talking to either side of the party. We should be able to make a decision that has not been influenced by anybody except for the statutes of the state of Wyoming and our planning and zoning regulations. The federal government is totally outside of everything. And so, but we have to comply with that. So neither are we the good guys or the bad guys. You should, I mean, we should be doing just enough to where we. We do our job. We shouldn't be chasing.
You are the guys that make the decision whether they come in and that's why we, the people.
Exactly.
Are wanting to give you information. Because we are finding there's misinformation out there and we're just wanting to help you. We are not the bad guys here either.
I don't consider you guys, I consider you guys another.
You seem to be on the defense and we're trying to help and inform.
I appreciate that and I do, I see that.
When was the last time somebody got bad press for donating to a fire department?
That wasn't bad press, that was just normal coverage.
It doesn't, it doesn't matter. Who gives a shit? That's their company business.
That's, that's our business.
That, yeah, but that's not the business of the county commissioners.
No, it is your business when there's money coming into a jurisdiction that you guys ultimately have oversight over.
No, we have no oversight.
We don't have oversight over the fires.
Do we have oversight over the fire business?
No, we do not.
They're special districts.
Well, they are special districts, but.
You have, you have jurisdiction over the special districts if you live in that district.
I do live in that district.
So vote against it if you don't like it. My point is that we do not influence that stuff. So if we keep it to what we do, it's protected.
Right, but that was a bad press, I was nearly pointing out they received ten thousand dollar bonus and I left it at that.
My, my point is, I don't care. I don't care what the paper writes, you can make your own bed. You know what I mean? So. That's right, that's correct, Lucina does have it for.
Just, just a big picture, here, here's what I'm saying though. You, Jeb, or, you don't wanna be educated by the people. Most of the people who are presenting are presenting information. That we have learned and it, and. I, I think it would help in your decisions in the end to hear some of that.
So let me, let me ask you this. Where do you think I'm failing in taking in everything you guys are giving?
I'm only giving in here, you haven't heard everything that we've presented.
But we've had you guys on, so the business of the county commissioners should be conducted in the county commissioners' meetings, correct? How many times have you been here? I don't know either, but it's certainly been more than two. And so, that's what my question is. What can we do better to make you feel like you're getting through to us? To me, my, my stance is that you guys have been here for several meetings. And it has been open, we've taken everything you've given us. I've read it. And so, I, I'm trying to figure out where I can do something that, and if I, if I can do anything to make you feel like we are listening to you. But without, without changing anything, I want you to know. We are listening to you.
I mean, I, I was just happy to have a commissioner show up at an open house because it shows that somebody is listening.
Very good.
So I thought that was good.
Yes.
That's my point. And I would like, and I know Jeb said, you know, because the mayor in Chogwata said, oh, you know, I don't know if this is gonna relate to you. But you might have a little curiosity to go there and just listen, just listen, just go and listen.
Yes.
So that's all I'm asking.
I agree.
Okay.
But you could go there without the head of the commissioner because you just went to the meeting with the head of fire department, am I correct?
I have no, I have, I'm not a party to anything that happens down there.
Bringing up a point.
I have no personal property that affuses.
We'll move on with our agenda and move on to Jill Kaufman.
Okay, I love it.
All right, there we go.
Appreciate it. Well, we do have a changing society and I really liked what, what David Russell talked about is all the, the changes that we had in the Obama administration. There's been a lot of indoctrination and everything. We also have problems with finances and finances in this county have been a problem for more than just immediately with these tax. Property tax induction or property tax coming in. So it's been a problem for a long time. So a couple of the things that I wanted to talk about. I think it's very, very important that. We need to start encouraging you guys to start going to non, to cut non-essential services and things from the county. And I know you guys do a good job about that, but I think we need to even get a little bit further. The people are tapped, the people are absolutely tapped. It's across the nation, it's not just here. Just this morning, I, I saw a video that Bobby Junior from the Home Health Services is now cutting SNAP programs seventeen percent and taking off all the sugars. That's a good cut, you know, because we're cutting, we can't afford to pay for everybody. We are not a socialist country and we don't wanna become one or continue down this path that we are. So with that, I wanted to ask a few questions just from, from previous questions or previous meetings. I did a little research on the WCCA information, okay? I found a title. And, and I was wanting to know, you had told me last time that the WCCA, if they ever sold that property that was in Cheyenne. That the counties would receive the benefit, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay, so is there a contract between you and the WCCA and all the other counties that states that? Or are they gonna roll it into another purchase?
I, I, I don't foresee them selling that property to start with. But I, they've always told us that it's our property. And if something ever happens with the WCCA Indians, that comes back to the counties.
Okay, so, so the building needs repair and all that stuff, do they take their, that, or is that gonna become to the counties if it's our property?
As far as at the time of the sale.
Pardon me?
At the time of the sale. I, Platte County wouldn't take possession of the property. Because we have to share it with twenty-two other counties.
Correct.
So basically, it would be sold and then the proceeds would be divided up between the counties.
And then that's my question, is there a contract or is it just a word of mouth, an agreement with you and the counties?
You know, I'd have to look for sure, but it may be in the bylaws.
Bylaws of what?
Of the WCCA.
Okay. Is there any way we can get a hold of those bylaws of the WCCA?
We should be able to.
Okay. The other question I had. Has, has this ever happened in previous years, other than this year and last year with this property purchase? Or rental or anything like that, that the WCCA came into our county and had us phased up?
You know, I, I can't speak as to when the original. Before my term, when, when the original property that, where they used to have their offices was purchased. Whether that was, I, I can't speak to it. I don't know how they acquired that.
But not since you've been in here?
Not since I've been here.
Is there any other county association that you guys are, are over, do the same thing? It's like the assessor or the treasurers, do they have a property down in Cheyenne that, that we pay for?
County commissioners, they'll, they'll, any other association other than the WCCA.
So it's just you guys that have it?
I, I can't speak to the clerks' association or the.
But you're signing, you're signing the waivers, yes?
The waivers. What waivers?
To pay dues and all that stuff, don't you?
The vouchers for.
Vouchers, excuse me, wrong wording. Okay, well, and I, I have a FOIA and thank you Malcolm again for always being so quick with your response. The FOIA that I had asked for was very good, but it brought up a couple other questions is, how is it handled in a situation with the associations? For instance, if you go down and testify or you go down and testify, or Malcolm goes down and testify. Do you get reimbursed through the association or through the county to go down and testify?
Testify as to what?
At, at the legislature.
As far as, like our time or?
Yeah, your time, your, your travel expenses if you have to stay overnight if it's.
We're not reimbursed for our time, they're, they do have a fund if, if. People can't pay to travel there or stay the night there that, but we've never taken.
So the county does not pay for that?
No.
Okay, because I know you guys have travel expenses, what are those travel expenses for then in your budget?
So, you're talking two different things, I think. We have a travel expense to go to the association meetings, but we don't have a travel expense to go, say, to testify at the legislature.
Okay, fair enough, I appreciate the clarification. So when you're going to travel to, for instance, take the, an assessor or in any of this, these counties or clerk, if they go down and they testify. Are they on county time or are they on association time?
Not sure. It's part, I mean, it's up to them.
You'd have to ask.
Yeah.
The other elected officials, as far as the county commissioners' time, we're always on our time.
So, so for example, let me get to the point of your question, there was a county commissioners' association meeting of the board in Jackson.
Yes.
Two years, three years ago, something like that, anyways, we decided that it was important to go. So Steve couldn't make it, I could make it. So Ian Jolovich paid for fuel and mileage up to Jackson, the hotel and food for Ian Jolovich. None of that came back to the county. That's part of what I think is responsible for me as a commissioner to do, to be involved in what controls us. I'm trying to get a, a hand on the tail that's wagging us, right? And so I think it's coming on me to go be more informed about state issues. And it'd be like, the next question would be, wouldn't you think it'd be a good idea to do that in public meetings for Next Era? But this is state issues and so it does directly affect us.
Whatever.
So all elected officials are on salary, so if Malcolm goes to Cheyenne and spends.
He's on the county dime, basically.
Yeah.
You're on the county dime, basically. If it's during the week.
It doesn't change.
Okay.
He's an exempt employee.
Then for Mr. Russell and his things, I suggest, and the people are suggesting, is that we remove non-essential stuff. And I know we chatted at a previous meeting that you guys would go to these meetings, even in you just testify, you go down on your dime. So I'm asking that our county does not pay for any association fees whatsoever, travel per diem, overnight expense. And I'd like to read to you a little article that are.
Hang tight, wait, what did you just say? What did you just say?
I asked that to create income so that we could transfer it to the dispatchers. That our county doesn't pay for all the association fees and dues and a building. And like travel expenses or per diem, if there is some that are turned in, to take that finance that you have budgeted for in your budget and give it to the dispatchers. There's one way to help.
I'm sorry, I thought I heard something about paying for people to go down and travel.
About what?
Pay, paying for people to go down and travel.
No, it's just in your, which you have in your mind.
So in response to that. We looked at it very closely, what our dues are to the Wyoming County Commissioners Association. And then we looked at what return are we getting for that? And we decided the return was way greater than the cost.
Exactly, and you shared that with us.
And so we have to have that information.
Right, and you shared to us that you would also pay for it on your dime.
Which would, which would.
So I am asking, and I'd like to read this letter for you.
Which would cost more if we paid for it on our own? If we were trying to get the revenue estimating manual. Which is what we start with to do the budget. It would cost more than what our dues are. Considerably more.
If I would go, I would like to see the money stay in the county. I would like to read to you something that people are willing to share with you in stepping up to help with cut, cutting costs. And please don't ridicule me or be snarky, I appreciate that. We, the people of Platte County, Wyoming, declare that we do not want to pay for high expenses for your involvement in the associations. And we request you withdraw, withdraw from such. We elected you, your role of a public servant, service, because we believe that you are committed to protecting our rights as American citizens. Protecting our rights includes protecting our property rights and hard-earned finances. The taxpayers of Platte County are struggling under every increasing huge burden of governmental draining our finances. It is easy, it is too easy for bureaucrats to believe that the government knows best on how our money should be used. We trusted you, that you would be more than a bureaucrat and hope that you would never lose touch with the realities of our lives here. We believe that making us pay more than four thousand three hundred and sixty-five dollars this year and other years for one of these association building mortgages in Cheyenne. Is not been in our best interest. Nor are the additional thousands upon thousands of dollars spent annually to various association in dues. And travel expenses and per diem expenses in, in the budget. We understand that you require training on specific aspects of your office duties and believe that that price that the associations exact, not, not just financially, is harmful to us, is what we're finding. The additional high price demand by all these county associations is conformity to their agendas and biases. Their business partners heavy sway and conformity to the biases of other counties. Do, which do not reflect our Platte County values, needs to be our priority. We have witnessed numerous incidences where your ears have been so full of these outside voices that you have not been able to hear. Or give true due diligence to our pleas. We believe there are numerous few frugal methods of obtaining necessary training without compromising to the powerful outside influences. Or obligating taxpayers to pay that huge bill for services that benefit their agendas and not for ours. We request that for the sake of the people, you withdraw from taxpayer funding of all these county associations and extra fees. And pursue an alternate much more in the interest of our true benefit and I appreciate it. And I, and I'd like to the question to be, David.
Very well written.
Thank you, we'll move on. Marie, you're on.
I'm just submitting our reporting that we've done on the Next Era project. As a matter of record, we have been investigating claims made by both Next Era and Roset. So we're not picking on anyone and we don't give a flying who if it's Next Era. So we're not picking on anyone and we don't give a flying who, if it's Next Era or if it's nuclear. And we're still also going, covering them through air minerals. So it, it has nothing to do with the company or, or eating the energy, it's just, residents across the county have made claims and have concerns. We've done our due diligence, try to get that, those answers from Next Era. But we've also had claims submitted to us by Next Era? And we are using public filings that are required under statutory law, under the ISD, to file with each project. So we do have that data and so we're just presenting that because, one, they're not speaking, they've completely decided to close up shop. And then today, we were notified that they've completely withdrawn from the Goshen County part of the project. So we got that early this morning. So there's going to be changes coming, there's going to be additional stuff we'd like to submit as a matter of record going forward. Because it's really important that not only you guys as our county commissioners, but the residents get the correct, accurate information based off of public filings? Which again, is statutorily required under the permitting process with ISD. So they're saying we're going to hire 50% of the workforce. Well, unless you guys sitting here say, you must, as a permitting condition, hire 50% of our workforce? They're only going to hire 10% according to what their filings say with the ISD currently. And only if those individuals are qualified with education certifications, because they're not going to train them. Unlike Pacificore, which is next door, as you guys know, will hire 23 to 50%. It, and they're willing to hire locals, so we're not trying to be the bad guys. We're just trying to get the same answers you guys are trying to get and the rest of the community. But we also have a responsibility to check the claims they make. And I, if it makes me the bad guy to say, nope, that claim's not correct, then I guess I'm the bad guy, but that's not our intent at all. So I hope you guys understand that. And then I'd just like to speak about the letter that we're all talking about, that's not directed directly at Platte County Commissioners or anything. What happened was, we had called our association, just like you guys, we having association, we do a lot of work with them monthly, weekly? And we informed them of the instances and you guys are aware of the behind the scenes stuff, because I've mentioned it a couple of times? Of what's going on behind the scenes between Next Era and the paper, right? So that was only a, hey, Next Era, you've got to not conduct, and we are aware of actual private meetings that ha, not between you guys. I'm not accusing commissioners, so I want to make that clear, but we are aware of private meetings that have happened with town councils in our county.
Okay, I'll give you this one for free. When we get legal documents served to us, or anyone.
Right.
Our response is to start defending, and so I don't care who it's from, who it's to, when I get that.
I know. Right.
That's what it is, and so just in case, in case that you guys are looking for feedback.
Right. We're not, no, yeah.
Well, okay, then I'll give it to you anyways.
Yeah. No, no, go ahead.
So that, that's what it causes us to do, right? So your decisions, and they are your decisions.
Well, it wasn't mine, that was the Wyoming Press Association.
That's fine.
Right.
Their decisions cause this, right?
Right.
So I wanted you to be abundantly clear that that decision causes apprehension from us.
And I understand that, and we have a follow-up story coming tomorrow to explain all that.
I don't care.
Right, I'm just letting you know. I'm doing my due diligence, that's all I'm doing.
Yeah, I, I, I really don't care.
Okay.
I just have one question.
Yeah.
You said that you, you belong to the Wyoming Press Association.
Yes.
Is it important to belong to that professional association?
Uh, are you asking in relation to her?
I'm asking you, is it important?
For me, yes, because I, the benefits as being part of the Wyoming Press Association are outnumbered the benefits of not being part of it.
Okay. Thank you.
At least on the newspaper side, I can speak to that. I don't know about anything else and I can't speak to anything else, I can only speak to the benefits provided to us with the WPA.
Does the taxpayer payer association?
Nope.
Is the paper payer?
Yeah, the paper pays my fees, yeah.
So that's a benefit, yeah. It's a benefit.
I don't care. Yes?
Sir, I have a question. I don't care if it's private meeting or public meeting, this meeting that the firefighters had with, with Next Era. You know, and the, this BES, this battery, um, storage facility? It's, it's my understanding that it will be the first one in the state if it's built.
Yes.
That we don't have any other, we don't have any other of those facilities in the state. I just have a concern about, you know, a Tesla or an electric car blowing up and you see the horror stories, okay? And I, and I, okay, just a minute, just.
No, no, I agree with you, I agree with you.
And, and so, I mean, we have a volunteer fire department, okay? And, uh, so I hear the horror stories about that. And then I'm thinking of this BES. Can you share any information that they, that Next Era gave you about, uh, the procedures about handling such a, such an emergency? If it ever happens?
Ba, basically, the, the systems are self-containing. They have fire suppression systems built into them and so what they basically told the fire departments is just let them do their thing and you guys? Make sure it doesn't get onto the neighboring properties.
So fight the wild, fight the grass fire in terms of.
Do, do what you're trained to do.
Okay, outside of the property type thing. So would it be, is it, is it a fair assumption to say that would be chemical? That would help fight the fire in the, in the container?
I, I don't know the systems that they have.
It wouldn't be water.
Hope not, yeah, probably like CO2 or something like that.
It's just a real stupid question because, uh, you know, I'm not a firefighter and, and, and this facility, you know, is new. So it'd be nice to, to have some more basic information for the public out there. Okay, and like I say, I don't care if it's public or, or private.
No, I agree with you and that's, I completely agree with you, that there's risk inherent in any system with that. And, and to be honest with you, I don't want to be anywhere near a battery system when it decides to not be anymore, right?
Yeah.
I, but, I mean, if you're looking at, I'm just some dumb country boy, every house out in the plains has 3,000 gallons of propane sitting out by it? Going, I don't know which one has more energy stored in it.
But we know how to handle it.
Exactly, that's my, that's exactly the point. It's exactly the point.
We, we know how to handle that because the firefighters were trained on how to handle that in a meeting where the proper people came in and trained us on.
Yeah. So, I mean.
As, as part of the fire department, we have an annual safety refresher training every year. And the, the fire warden slash now emergency manager sets that up and they try to bring somebody in. Like one year, the REA came in and said, this is what you do when you have a fire near REA lines. This is what you do when you have a fire near a propane tank.
I'm, I'm sorry, my question led to another one that I thought of.
Yeah.
Ian, uh, as your, in your new job as a, uh.
Go ahead, yeah.
I mean, what about this BES? I mean, where's it going to be set at, you know, something to consider, okay? I don't need an answer to it.
I absolutely, I absolutely agree with you.
Yeah.
Right now, yes.
I'm just trying to be proactive in this stuff, whether he there or not.
So, so currently, Platte County, Platte County does not have any regulations in regard to BES.
BES systems.
Systems. And so we have told Next Era that before we do permit a BES system, we want to develop regulations for that.
Well, could we?
We can start, absolutely, yeah, yes.
And so, so we, we've actually been looking at.
Could we talk about the towers and the solar too?
Yes.
So just, just to be proactive, that's, that's, that's my comment.
And that's, that was my comment too, the reason we sit up here and say, I don't know, I don't know, I don't know. Because we have not got anything official from Next Era, anyone else, right? So you look at me like that's a bad thing? So if they were to submit, I was looking at the wall when I said that.
Now I'm a wall, thank you, Ian.
Good words, not mine. My point is that since we, in the, in the progression of how this thing goes? It, we cannot change regulations after a, this, in, in response to an application, right?
No.
Correct.
So on the other side of that, exactly my point, and so that's not a bad thing that we don't know anything.
And I don't think we can change our regulations in anticipation of getting an application either.
Actually, statutorily, you can, it has to.
And so, and so we, but that's my point, we can, we can work on that and we should work on that.
Yeah.
Going forward, right? So that, that is our opportunity to get some, some say in it, right? So we can still work on that. Right, that's a planning and zoning conversation after the fact, right? So let's keep working on that.
And what we've done is tried to protect the land and the county.
And let's keep working on that, let's keep working on that and the planning and zoning. There we go.
I wanted to give this for record, would you guys like a copy of the letter? Oh, cookies.
Don't know if they're poisoned or not yet.
They would not be.
Think you'd be surprised.
Now, Mr. Chairman, could I take a few moments to comment on your statement?
Sure.
Now that the three most recent editions of the Platte County Record Times are part of the record? I want to take a few moments to clarify a few items that I am concerned with. It's important that the elect, that the official record of the board contains a rebuttal for some of the items I felt were concerning to me as a commissioner. And I suspect a concern to my fellow board members. First, I want to begin by acknowledging the importance of a free and independent press. The First Amendment to the US Constitution guarantees that right, but it's important because the press provides accountability. However, that does not mean the press is infallible. I think we've all seen examples of that nationally. As such, I do want to clarify a few things that I felt were, could be misleading or construed in a manner that were not intended. In the July 2nd edition, there was a quote on the first page that read, the commissioners have not yet decided nor announced? If the county will go first or second during the permitting process. At the time, that was accurate reporting and I have no qualms about it. But since the article, Chairman Shockley has informed Next Era that we receive their application because we can't control when they apply? We will process it after the industrial siting division process has finished. However, on A7, this is a page of the paper? There is a quote that says, in some cases, the turbines would be sited just a few hundred feet from people's homes. On page 121, the Platte County Planning and Zoning Rules and Regulations of the Setbacks Required for Wind Turbines. That section says turbines must be at least one quarter mile from any dwelling or occupied structure. That means the minimum distance any turbine could, any turbine could be would be 1,320 feet away from any dwelling. The section continues by saying, no case can a tower be less than 5.5 times the turbine's height from an occupied structure or dwelling. For a 300-foot tower, that would be 1,650 feet. My disappointment in this reporting is that those regulations were not cited. As such, some readers may believe turbines will literally be 200 or 300 feet from homes. To be clear, the minimum setback from an occupied structure is 1,320 feet. Continued on A8, there is a passage that in essence says, we, as the board of county commissioners? Will have to consider whether we support a dying industry? Which the paper said that was the wind turbine industry or preserving agriculture. To be clear, that's not our choice. Ultimately, landowners have the right to develop their land in accordance with our rules and regulations. It's not our place to determine which path those landowners should take. It's not our place to pick winners and losers or determine in which ways we believe people should develop their lands. That's their choice, provided they do it within the law and our rules. She's gone, okay, well, I do want Ms. Hamilton, that the article printed in July 2nd edition has already caused? People in the community to feel as though the reporting they are seeing has a bias. I had numerous phone calls after that article from folks who used the term biased journalism, hit piece, skewed writing, unquote. That has no bearing on us as commissioners, but I do think it's fair for the Record Times to know that the perception? Is that the articles regarding the Chugwater Energy Project are not simply stating the facts? But are instead drawing conclusions and inferences for the readers. Continuing now to July 23rd edition on the first page? It was printed that the board reappointed Bob Brockman to planning and zoning. The remainder of that paragraph may lead some leaders to, to believing? We as commissioners did not do our due diligence. Specifically, the paper said the appointment, quote, drew public commentary about a lack of geographic diversity on the board, end quote. What the paper failed to print was that we had not received a single application for anyone? Interested in being appointed to the Planning and Zoning Commission. Perhaps the intended, the article was not to make it sound as if the commissioners randomly selected someone to serve on the board? But unfortunately, is, it does read as if we failed to take that appointment seriously. To be clear, anyone who wishes to serve on any board appointed by the commissioners must file an application with the county clerk's office. Those applications are available online. Also printed in a caption on July 23rd edition was a reference to Next Era? Being a board member on both the Chamber of Commerce and PCED? I've confer, I've confirmed with both entities that Next Era is a member of both organizations? And are a board member of PCED, but PCED bylaws allow for any business or individual? To be a board member depending upon their membership level. As such, the option to be a board member is available to anyone. They are not, however, a board member of the chamber. I find this to be troubling and may lead readers to believe that Next Era has some sort of inside track? To approval based on their memberships with these two important organizations. Ultimately, the decision regarding any land use question will come down to whether application follows the laws? And rules of the county. Now for the July 30th edition on A8? There are multiple references to two county commissioners attending a meeting held by Next Era. The article does not say that the board held an illegal meeting? Or that the board conducted business outside of the full view of the public? But a letter sent by the Wyoming Press Association yesterday certainly accuses us of wrongdoing. As such, we have to assume the intent of the article was to accuse us of violating Wyoming's public meeting law. Unfortunately, the article and the letter from the Wyoming Press Association failed to cite Wyoming statute 16-4402A? Which says a meeting, quote, means an assembly of at least a quorum of the governing body of an agency. And here's the important part, which has been called by property authority of the agency. The meeting attended was not called by the board of county commissioners pursuant to Wyoming statute 16-4404? And as such, was not a meeting of the board? Implying that any time two commissioners are in the same room constitutes meeting is wrong. Does that mean any branding can only be attended by one of us or harvests or what about irrigation district meetings? Would all those be considered meetings of the board? I can assure you that at each, some information about the county comes up from the public. But we're not taking any official action at those meetings? And neither did we at the meeting held on July 15th. I know the paper did not accuse us of holding an illegal, illegal meeting? But I wanted to make sure any reader does not draw that conclusion. I also fear the article leaves readers to believe we are in, quote, cahoots with Next Era. Unfortunately, we've all heard members of the public accuse us of that due in large part to the reporting done by the paper. On a personal note? Mr. Chairman, last article printed on the June 30th edition of the Record Times says wheat farmer Jeb Baker also cut? About a month earlier than usual also, end quote. Although that references to my personal life in a small county, our personal lives quickly bleed into our lives as commissioners. I'm not sure whether Record Times got this information, but it's completely false. In fact, I submitted a claim with federal crop insurance for 97% loss. I worry if my insurance agent or a member of the public read that line? But knew about my claim, they would accuse me of committing insurance fraud. Being a commissioner requires a certain level of public trust in statements. Like that could have seriously implications for that trust. So let me say clearly for everyone here and online, I did not cut a wheat crop this year. In closing, I want to make sure to everyone, I want to make sure everyone understands that we, the board of county commissioners? Were hired by the people through the ballot box to work for all county residents. We took an oath to abide by the law and cannot change them to suit anyone's fancy. We are always focused on doing the right thing for the county. We are always focused on doing the right thing for the county, but in the future, we hope to have both sides of the story represented. The energy project has struck quite a few nerves in the county. I would hope a future version of the Record Times may highlight how the landowners who have entered into wind leases feel. I do applaud Marie for working hard and trying to report on so many important issues. Like commissioners, the paper depends on a certain level of public trust, and I think some of that trust has been lost in the last few issues, but I have full faith Marie will work hard to restore that trust.
I have a question. On your, in the wind regulations where you're stating it's a quarter mile, okay?
Minimum.
Minimum, right. Well, that quarter mile minimum is within health hazard length. That distance is not far enough away for a residence to be, for that resident to be impacted.
But what you're not following is what I said that followed that up, because when you take the height to that tower at five and a half, you're nowhere near that thirteen hundred and some feet. So once again, listen to the whole thing. That's all I'm asking.
I totally understand that, and I appreciate what you guys are doing, trying to stay apolitical and not picking a side or anything like that. But if we are held to the regulations as they are written now, new information has come out since then, that are those regulations good enough? Is that distance far enough? Now, I don't, the height and all that, it's close to, they're saying that up to three miles can cause damage and cause you to have health issues, headaches and everything else. So, Mike, so what happens if those regulations are inadequate? How do we, what do we do?
I don't, I'm not a lawyer, but you probably have. I mean, if they do, what we're talking about is damages to you or somebody else. I would imagine the legal system has some remedy for that. I don't know, like I said, I'm a lawyer, but...
Like with the killing of the eagles, that kind of?
No, to be honest with you, to be honest with you, if you killed every one of the bald eagles in Platte County, I wouldn't be coming after you. You see what I mean? That's a federal thing.
But the remedies to that in the federal note are so weak, it's almost non-existent. So shouldn't we protect our own?
If you would like to include a section, I mean, seriously, this is where it's going. If you would like to include protection for bald eagles in planning and zoning regulations, I would be glad to hear that, and we can probably go through the same process, but to be honest with you, I, like I said, maybe this makes me a bad person, but I have no interest in bald eagles, or any other thing that's federally mandated that is either protected or covered. You know what I mean? I can't change that, and so I don't want to spend blood and treasure in Platte County trying to chase them unless, unless the public overwhelmingly wants that. You know, I'm like a piece of clay, right? I don't really care. If you guys do care, I'd be willing to listen.
Just one more. Jeb, could you please read the first sentence of your letter, because I just want to make sure I heard it right? And then I have a question to thank you.
The first sentence?
About somebody was worried that their house, they were too close to a windmill or something at the beginning, you were talking about that?
No, it wasn't exactly in the beginning.
Page seven, 121, something like that.
So I think it said something in the effect that a wind turbine could be a few hundred feet from somebody's front door.
Yeah, that line. Could you read that again? Exactly how you read it?
Well, I said on A7, there's a quote that says, "In some cases, the turbines would be sited just a few hundred feet from people's homes."
Stop. That information is coming probably from a Nextera map, where they've already put the turbines in place, and that's where people are getting that information. So that's, I mean, that is easily solved by, of course they would, because we're going to have, we're going to have good regs.
We have good, I mean, I don't know.
We're going to have better regs, so that will be solved. But I think that information came exactly from their map, so it's not cited.
I just know where I got it.
Right, but that is not true. That would not, never be true. So that's another, but yeah, okay.
I just have a quick question. Are the planning and zoning meetings, meetings where people can go, like when you're in the regs?
You are more than welcome. Yes, and they will be announced publicly for any hearing that we do on changing regulations, yes.
And so that the information, because I'm one of those people, obviously, that's like, you know, the quarter mile, even a mile, there'd still be, there'd be health ramifications for people, but for people who are susceptible. So is that like an instance where if I wanted to come to that kind of meeting to weigh in on the regs, would I bring, would I bring some of those articles with me? Some of them are medical studies that are 70 pages long that I'd rather not print out. I could email you guys. I've already emailed you a few things, but that way you know, like that way you see it.
The planning and zoning meeting, typically, we don't attend. It goes to the Planning and Zoning Commission. And that would be an information you could present to them if you chose to.
Just, I mean, just because I would want it to be, there's plenty of backup to that.
And you're encouraged to come to those.
When is, when are those? We talked about that earlier, is that, the Tuesdays in between the commission meetings?
Yeah, typically, but we don't have them every month because of some business.
But in this case, would they be more, because we have a window of time to do these changes, so it'd be more?
If there's no business to consider, they typically don't have a planning and zoning meeting.
Right.
So if somebody submitted a change to the rules and regulations, then they would meet. If there was a special use permit to consider, they would meet.
Subdivision, stuff like that.
Subdivision.
Normal business, but yes.
But if there's no business, we don't, they typically don't meet.
So the next one, is that August 12th then?
Is that the next Tuesday?
Yes.
Yes.
It hasn't been scheduled yet.
Oh, okay. And should I, so let's say I have 16 solidly medical journal papers about the dangers of living near, within, you know, a few miles of a wind turbine or a wind farm. Should I bring, should I email those to you? Because you're the guy.
Typically, what happens is that we, we don't, all the normal business gets taken care of during normal business, their normal meeting schedule. And we, if we have anything like that, we, what we've done in the past is schedule a workshop, and so it can be specific to that point. And so I don't, you know, I don't think it's, but anyways, that's how that would work. So.
So in the past, when there were, considering changes to rules and regulations, they would schedule a workshop, get all the information, talk about it, then later, there would be a public hearing if there was a change requested or approved to take public input. Then the Planning and Zoning Commission would make a recommendation to the commissioners on, this is what we recommend. Then it comes to the commissioners for a second public hearing where all the public would be able to testify on one way or another, and then the decision would be made at a commission meeting, the final decision.
Yes.
So in practical steps, because I'm trying to type, take, like, put a little to-do list in my brain, so should I have like a flash drive with me when I come, if I were to come to a workshop or something? Should I bring a flash drive? Should I email it in advance so that?
Probably email in advance.
And that would be to planning, like to the planning and zoning people, or to you, and then you could disseminate it?
Yep.
Thank you, sorry, I just, a lot of this is very new to me, but I want to do the right, I want to follow the right steps and get it to the right people, so. So will you be getting that? You are a plant, you are currently planner@plattcountywyoaming.com?
Enter.
Yeah, the caveat to that is that we're still working on getting access to the planner email, so I've been, but.
Well, that'd be a problem. So should I also send it to you, your commissioner?
Please, please. I hope to have that resolved today, is why I didn't give you mine, you know, to start with, and so either way, it needs to be resolved today, absolutely, on my end.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, anytime.
At this point, we've got to go into executive session, so I'm going to make the motion that we go into executive session for legal matters.
Second.
Kishman moved and seconded to move into executive session for legal matters. There is further discussion. Hearing on all of the things.
We're supposed to be done nude.
You're supposed to be done nude?
Yeah, we don't have anything left on our agenda.
All right.
Alright.
If there's not a mention of county bite of pizza in the minutes, we're not going to sign it.
So how did the black panther county car go? Everybody happy?
Yeah, seemed to be.
Good, I think.
Had a lot of positive comments.
No further a business. We'll consider ourselves adjourned.